Without waiting for Nancy at the moment, I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order. This is a budget workshop meeting, not a regular town council meeting. If you would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For the record, Finley let us know that he's not feeling well enough to attend the meeting. Hopefully, he'll be observing, and if he has questions, he was told to text Paul with those. And if we need to, we'll find some way to incorporate him to the meeting. I don't know. Nancy said she was running a few minutes late. I haven't heard from Andy, so we'll assume he's going to show up probably at 7:00, because it's easy to forget that we start these budget meetings at 6:30 instead. But be that as it may. There's been a request to redo the orders. The agenda went out, putting assessing first with Town Clerk, Tax Collector second, media, communications, police and police detail, community development, general government, and revenue. Media will not be presenting tonight, and assessing, we're going to push back to just before general government. So we're going to move community development up to the beginning here and start with the community development budget. Paul, do you want to open that up?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the budgets, you'll see that in the front of every budget section, there's a chart of account, not a chart of accounts, but organizational chart. And that's the positions that are within that department, and that's what the budget covers. For community development, they have a total of four full-timers and one part-timer. As you'll go through, you'll see some, as you'll see, like wages clerical, there's a decrease requested for what was voted on 2021-22 to 2022-23. That's for a couple of reasons. The first reason is, is that that's the 53rd week of payroll that's backing out. And since these are non-union positions, there's no non-union raises in the budget. So that's, the wage is there. There's no increase in salaries. The ones that do have union contracts and contracts that are in effect are scheduled to get a 2% cost of living increase for this year. And when those departments come up, we'll let you know which departments those are that have that. Community development's pretty straightforward. Like I said, it's, Tim does a very good job of managing his budget year in year out. Some of the, he does have some new staffing, and that was adjusted as one of the variances in some of the staffing lines. So without further ado, I'll let Tim go ahead.
Just before you get started, because I wasn't paying attention to the agenda when I started, we have a public comment section, but there's not anybody from the public here. So I'm going to assume that the public's going to pass on that portion, but I wanted to just mention it, so we're online. With that, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. A pleasure to be here again for my 10th budget with you guys.
Really?
Yes.
That's awesome.
It is. I inherited my first. This is going into my 11th year here with the town, but my 10th budget. Paul did a good summary. Overall, I'm about $5,600, $5,700 lower overall than I was last year, primarily because of the 53rd week of payroll not being applicable. Otherwise, as I try to do pretty much every year, I try to level fund my budget as much as possible. There have been some shifting around in some of the line items this year. We do have a need to purchase a couple of new large hanging file cabinets as we continue to fill the space that we have with the continued development plans going through the planning board process. So I've taken a look at some of the previous years and different line items and shifted some of those funds to account for the $7,500 I expect it's going to cost for two new planned cabinets to be added to the department. Outside of that, like I said, it's basically the same budget. I do try to be as cognizant as I can to the interests of the taxpayer and the town council. Try to keep things as level as I possibly can, but still look to meet the needs of the department and the community. Just a couple of highlights, as I try to do each year. Looking at the planning board process, agenda items for both the planning board and the zoning board, we had 130 combined agenda items for those boards in 2021, which is an increase of only six from 2020. So pretty consistent amount of development applications being seen by the two boards. And the time that my staff and I have spent staffing those land use boards has increased slightly from 54 hours to 61 hours. A lot of that, I think, is, we actually had full year of meetings in 2021 where 2020, there was that pause we had during the COVID crisis before the advent of us moving to the virtual meetings. The major project from the department staff and planning board coming up this year will be the revamp and redesign of our subdivision regulations. The basic framework of that has been completed. I'm working with the engineering staff and the public works department to make sure that all our drainage and roadway standards are up to speed and consistent with the operational goals of the community. And I'm hopeful that we'll get that in front of the planning board for a public hearing and hopefully adoption during 2022. On the staff side, I did have one change. Sharon Haynes was moved up from my department to general government, and I have hired Stephanie Brin, who previously worked at New Hampshire Technical Institute in their admissions office as my part-time person. She's hit the ground running and has been a really phenomenal addition to the department, and we really have not missed a beat. So certainly welcome to answer any questions you have on any of the lines in the budget. But like I said, I think it's as pretty straightforward as I've been in 10 years.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Barbara?
Couple of questions for you, Tim. For overtime other, which is 0121-81110.
Yes.
Originally last year, it was budgeted for $750, but you're down to $300.
Yes.
You think you'd be okay with that?
Yes, we only actually used $93 of that.
Yeah, I saw, and I was like, okay.
The reason that that line, I actually had no overtime budget for the majority of my time here in the community, but since we've moved away from having an on-call recording secretary for the planning and zoning boards.
Oh, okay, yeah.
My in-department staff now does those as part of their regular day-to-day duties, and that line item is there in the event that we need to have that overtime used because of activity within the department in order to meet statutory deadlines.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
So the hanging files for $7,500, is that like one or two files?
There'll be two large cabinets that have sliding. We actually hang the folder, the Mylar plans in those. They probably hold about, I want to say 500 sheets of Mylar in each of those. If you go into the conference room downstairs, you'll see a ring of them around the entire conference room. That's all the required hard copy of the plans that were required to keep by state law.
How long do you have to keep them?
There's no limit. We have to keep them. We do scan all the plans as they're filed that way, but until state law changes, we have to maintain our physical copies.
So you expect this $7,500 to last you another several years?
That should get, the last time I bought these plan hanging file cabinets was, I believe, in 2016. So they've lasted me about six, five or six years usually.
All right, go ahead.
Tim, the Heritage Commission falls under the purview of community development, I think, right?
Tangentially.
Yeah, it's kind of a strange relationship. So I don't see anything in the budget for that.
I've never had a budget for Heritage.
That's in general government.
It's in general government? Because I didn't see it in general government either.
Yeah, they have a very, they have a very small budget, about $300 for general government.
You can show me when we get there.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the Historical Society, but I didn't see the Heritage.
Small print underneath, maybe. Any other questions or comments? So you said, I'll just make a note that Andy Hunter has gotten here, and Nancy Murphy appeared also during our discussion here. So that's a quarter, that's 16 till roughly. You said that there were approximately the same number of items in the planning board and zoning board for last year and 2020. Is that above average, below average, average?
Tracking-wise, we've been averaging between 100 and 150 applications combined per, for those boards per year. Those aren't unique applications, but every time something appears on an agenda as an agenda item, I count them.
Oh, so even if they're, even if they're tabled to the next one?
For example, Flatley has three different projects that probably appear seven or eight different times, each because of continuances. Each one of those is counted in terms of the number of applications, because what I'm actually tracking is the number of agenda items that the boards are dealing with.
Oh, okay, not, all right.
Not, not unique applications.
Okay. But they track generally in the 100, 150 range?
Generally, that's been my experience over the last six years or so, yes.
Yeah. And you don't have any projections for what you might expect?
No.
Because you never know.
You never know. It's, this, this year, we've actually seen a little bit of a rebound in terms of non-residential applications. Obviously, everybody knows the last few years have been primarily dominated by the multifamily and the larger residential developments. But the, the large 320,000 square foot facility proposed off of Robert Milligan, we've got another 100,000 plus, an addition over at 57 and 59 DW Highway where the old Nashville Corp. was. So, and the two Flatley industrial projects as well. So we've seen a pretty good amount of industrial development, which I'm encouraged by.
Okay, that sounds good. Andy, we're talking about community development. If you happen to have any questions on it.
Apologize for being tardy, Mr. Chairman. I had some confusion on the start time.
But, you know, we kind of thought that might be the case.
When I realized my mistake, you don't know how fast I was moving down here.
We don't want to hear that. We're on, we're on TV, so.
I was doing 35.
That was a fast 35. Okay. If there are no other questions for community development, then we thank you for your time and energy and look forward to this coming year.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Which will bring us to the Town Clerk Tax Collector's budget. Which is 24, if you're looking for the tab, like I am.
So in the Town Clerk Tax Collector budget this year, I included a memo from Diane about the number of new registrations and some salary information and things of that sort for her, her staffing. Diane requested to go from, what I'll do is, there's four full-time window positions, for lack of a better term, four full-time window positions and one part-time window position. Diane was requesting to change that part-time window position to a full-time position. And looking at the budget and knowing what else was coming down, I couldn't see doing that this year. I've asked Diane to include that information to bring it forward to the council, so you guys can see why she's looking for making that part-time into full-time. Like in community development, Diane has a total of six full-time people, one part-time person. Diane is also responsible, working with the supervisor to checklist and the moderator on elections and actually to do elections and the ballots and things of that sort. So to say Diane had a very busy year in 2020 and now in 20, through 20, in 21, was an understatement because of the elections and things of that sort. You will not see the election budget in Diane's budget. That's in general government. However, like I said, one of her responsibilities as Town Clerk is to help oversee those, those elections for the people at home and for the, for the new members of the council. It's a pretty straightforward budget. I think overall, she had about $1,300 increase from 21-22 to 22, what I'm proposing, 22-23. I'll let Diane take it away from here.
Good evening.
There you go.
Thank you, Paul. You pretty much summarized almost all of my notes that I was going to discuss with you this evening. For council members or the, and those watching at home who may not know, with me tonight is Brenda Dulong. She is the Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector. She helped me craft this budget and put it together. We scrutinized every line item like we always do, always being cognizant of the tax rate and the burden to the taxpayers. As Paul mentioned, the budget before you is not that budget that I submitted. We are looking to increase our staff because of the growth in town, number one, and the growth with the, that we're seeing with our online transactions. Our window has been busy, not with new car registrations for new vehicles. As you know, there's a chip shortage. Dealer inventories are low. We're busy with new residents. All day long, it's, do you have proof of residency? I'm new to town. I need to register my car. I need to register to vote. Almost all of our walk-in customers.
Can you pull it closer?
Oh, sorry. Almost all of our walk-in customers on a daily basis are new residents. In 2019, I believe it was, community development had said there were approximately 1,400 residential units in the works. My understanding as of 2021, there is roughly, where's my note? 1,270. They're still unoccupied. Our saving grace is the fact that there's a chip shortage going on right now. So that, that's one of the reasons we're looking to increase our staff. The other reason has to do with the daily reconciliation. With the acceptance of the online transactions, many people think that would allow us to reduce our staff, but that just is not the case. There's a lot of coordination between our department and the finance department on deposits, making sure we have the money so we can transact, process the transaction. It's not an automated process. We still have to process the transaction as if the customer was in front of us, but then we have all the layers of the balancing, making sure the monies are there. A lot of times with the online transactions, there are things we're not aware of. There are revocations. For some reason or another, maybe they're not able to process the transaction. Takes us a lot of time doing chargebacks, refunding customers, all of that. So we balance five different applications for accepting ACH and credit cards at the windows, as well as accepting those online and with our tax program. It's a great service and a great convenience for the public. Our numbers have, have increased significantly from where they have been over the last few years. COVID was great with showing people how easy it was to transact their business with Town Hall from the comfort of their home, but it adds to our workload. That's our primary, primarily our, our reason for asking for that increase. It used to take us approximately an hour to reconcile all of our daily receipts. Brenda is currently the person who's responsible for that. We've had some staff, staffing changes, and we were trying to utilize one of our employees to help with that. We lost her. She's moved on. You all know Robin in the town manager's office. So Brenda's had to assume that duty again. It now takes over four, four hours a day or more sometimes, depending on how many reversals, ACHs that were rejected for non-sufficient funds, things of that nature. That's four and a half hours that she's not able to do other, other work or to assist me. So that starts to backlog on some of the higher end of the duties that we share. So primarily, that's part of our reason for that. We've seen an increase of over 900 vehicle registrations and 300 voter registrations just in the past, you know, year or two from, strictly from the new developments, not just residents moving in who are buying, you know, homes that are selling or, or existing apartments that are being vacated. That's just attributed to the new developments. So we're expecting with these, with another 1,270 units, there's an average of three registrations per household. We're looking at adding about 3,800 new registrations annually, once these units are occupied. When the chip shortage ends and cars start rolling off the dealer lots, we're going to have all of those customers coming in as well. I'm not going to keep beating the dead horse on that aspect. As Paul mentioned, there are very slight changes to our budget after his, you know, reduction. We do have two new items. All the other changes are costs that are without of, are outside of our control. We have two new items to the budget this year for a total of $1,600. And the first one is in, in our outside maintenance of office equipment. We are looking to contract with another provider for our online tax program. This provider charges an annual $600 hosting fee. The reason we want to make that change is because, A, their process seems a little bit easier with reconciling the monies and receiving the payments. Their program is superior to what we have now because it allows the resident to see their actual tax bill versus just, I don't know if any of you use, have gone on the tax kiosk, but it shows them now their assessment, their bill amount, what's been paid towards the bill, any interest due. It doesn't give them an actual copy of their bill. And our staff spends a lot of time duplicating bills, emailing them to customers, to closing attorneys, things like that. This company that does this has the ability to host a copy of the bill online so that the customer can go on and see that. And it also has capabilities for the customer to sign up and register so that when we issue a new bill, they get a notification, your tax bill's been released. Our commercial accounts can do that as well. For a commercial sewer, a lot of our businesses now, and Brenda can attest to, she does all of the commercial sewer billing. A lot of them have agents that are managing their properties. So the property information and the property bills and things are going to one address, but the management company needs the bills to pay them. Brenda spends, I don't know how, how much time monthly. Probably two full days. Researching bills and emailing them and getting them to customers to pay. For $600, that frees up her time. The other item that we're looking at purchasing is $1,000, and that's in the office equipment. It's for barcode scanners that will work with our clerk package. Will allow the motor vehicle renewal notices to go out, the dog notices, things of that nature, with a barcode on them. So when a customer comes in and run their barcode, it automatically pop up all of their registrations. Any they don't want to do, we can just click off of it, and they get processed. Instead of having the clerk have to key in every plate number, assign a sticker, process it. It helps automate that. If one of our clerks keys in the wrong plate number and registers the wrong vehicle for a customer, it takes almost an hour for the state to reverse that transaction, put it back to the way it needs to be, and for our clerk to continue waiting on the customer. This helps eliminate some of those keying errors, saving us time and equating that to money in dollars and things that we could otherwise be doing. Other than that, we're happy to answer any other questions you might have in the budget and hope you might consider putting the funding for the full-time position back in.
Does anybody have any questions? Andy?
And I don't know if this is, not necessarily that I'm challenging the budget, but it concerns me when we talk about online transactions, and that has created four times as long to reconcile that. I, I think we can all safely assume online transactions are only going to become more popular. They're not going to become less popular. And, and in my simple mind, you know, I think when someone's sitting at home and they do all the manual data, data entry themselves, then me on the other end, all I have is a database that I have to manipulate at the other end. And so I struggle trying to understand how, if I'm not sitting there on a counter having to manually enter all of that data for the customer, but all I have is a database to manipulate, how does it take four times as long? And what do we need to do as a town to find the efficiency in those online transactions, knowing that they're only going to increase over time? That's the part that I struggle with. Again, I don't know that that's a, I don't know that it's a budget question.
Oh, it is.
Well, it is. Well, it may be, it may be in a future investment that we need to go out and look at the right software. I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is. Again, I don't know that there's a solution in the budget, but I think it's something we need to look at, because next year, it may not be four times as long. It may be five times as long.
Lud?
I'm not sure I'm in the right ballpark, but I think, Andy, some of the length comes from not only what the town can do, but working with the state. Does that create, am I in the wrong pew in terms of does, does transmitting the information that comes to us to the state? Does that lengthen the process at all in terms of what Andy's talking about?
I'm not sure I'm following. So with motor vehicles, we are connected to the state, but that doesn't have anything to do with our credit card revenues. It does, it has. I can tell you that since the state has connected all of the towns to the motor vehicle program, yes, there are times that our processing has been elongated because anything that's, that a customer has that maybe is a hold against their registration, maybe they're suspended, maybe they have EZ Pass, things like that, we don't know until we go to process their transaction. So now we're dealing with the customer. We're getting involved between them and the state. The other thing that the state is, has done over the years is they have significantly expanded the types of transactions that we do in our office. We used to only be able to do regular passenger vehicles, issue them stickers, license plates on a new car up to a certain weight. Now we have become the DMV, and we handle almost every transaction that they handle with some, you know, exceptions. But, so that has added significantly since 2008 to our workload. Our numbers have gone up significantly with transactions. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, but.
It probably isn't, but it's sufficient in terms of understanding that there's more than just the town involved in at least auto registration.
Yes.
Boats and whatever.
Boats, campers, mopeds, you name it. Yes.
So you mentioned an increase in the number of transactions. I, I got the number 3,800 or something like that, or potentially that increase in the upcoming year because of the extra 1,200 units or something like that.
Yeah.
How many transactions do you do annually? I mean, are we talking a high percentage of the overall, or?
Yes, we are. So we average close to 36,000 car registrations annually. That's a, we, in 2007-08, when we were, before the state rolled out their program, we were doing about 27,000 state transactions. So we've gone up 10,000 state transactions a year, and our car, car registrations have gone up as well.
So the 38 is just state transactions, or is it?
That's, well, it's kind of, that's.
Town Clerk Tax Collector Office transaction. I mean, you said you do three.
It's registrations.
You said you do three registrations per, per unit on average.
Correct. Yep.
And is those three registrations, is that the 38,000, 36,000?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So if you take the number of households in town divided by the number of registrations we do, that averages three per household. Obviously, some have more.
I don't know how many households are in town anymore. It's completely.
I know.
Out the window. But.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, back in seven and eight, 27,000, this is, you know, quite a few years later than that, 13, 14. And we're only up to 36,000. How many, I mean, was your staffing that much different back then?
It's a two-part process as well. So, I mean, we're doing the, the town and the state, state portion. So the state has certain rules that we have to process for them in a certain manner as well.
Well, you used to do auto registration at one window, and then you go to another
And you go to the other. Now we're kind of combining it. But we're also getting
window.
a lot of customers who come in now for just plate replacements, things that they used to do only at the DMV. Duplicate registrations, things that they used to do at the DMV. So that's, so those are the, that's where the 10,000 extra type of transactions.
So, that's, so those are the, that's where the 10,000 extra type of transactions above and beyond what we're doing for everyday car registrations is coming from.
Has your staffing changed in that last 13 years or so?
No, we're at, we're at the same staffing level.
Same staffing level, okay.
Yep, it's varied over the years because, you know, one year we lost a person to a part-time position, another time we had two part-time people, three full-time, so it has varied, but it's primarily been the same staff.
Okay.
Staffing levels.
Nancy, go ahead.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, just to help you understand, the property, you mentioned something about the town is obligated to send the tax bills to property managers rather than owners, which seem to spend a lot, no? I thought you, okay, what did you say about, clarify that?
So, we mail to the property owners.
Yeah.
But the property managers don't always get those bills. They're contracted by the property owner to pay their bills.
Right.
So, they're reaching out to us because they're not getting them from the property owner or from, so a lot of the big companies have different divisions. So, maybe their property bill goes here, but they have a property management company here. So, the property managers, sometimes, a lot of times, they don't communicate, or their offices or their companies are so big, things aren't timely. So, the property managers are always checking their calendars, it's quarterly, quarterly, quarterly. So, they always contact us for the billing information. If they can see it online, they want a duplicate bill so they can pay.
Is it follow-up?
Sure.
So, would, would, had there not been a property manager involved, would it just be the owner maybe following up in a business?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out the difference in work involved in terms of property managers and owners. I didn't know if you guys were being expected to do all the work to figure out who the property manager was and then send them the bill, so no.
No, they reach out to us.
Okay.
Yep, they contact us, and then they'll, you know, they'll say, you know, we manage this company, we're having trouble getting the bill, we need to pay it because we're under contract with, you know, XYZ company, so we have to pay timely. So, they look for those, those types of requests.
Okay, and a second question. Was just around doing things online, is there a, I know for sometimes, for some things, there are charges to do things online, is, are those involved with what we're talking about when there's an increase of online, whatever, registrations or whatever we're doing for, the community is able to do online? So, are residents incurring online charges to access that?
Yes, residents who choose to use the online do incur fees. There's a fee for ACH, and then it's a percentage, 2.79% if they use a credit card, and it's anywhere from $1.50 to $2.50 a transaction if they ACH.
Okay, thank you. I was just thinking of the impact to...
Yep.
They're paying a fee to use it online.
Yep.
And then they're also maybe having to be asked to pay for additional staffing to, so, just trying to think of that, thank you.
So, please clarify, who gets those fees?
The online companies, the banks, the credit cards.
Those aren't, those fees are not collected by my...
We do not get any of those fees.
I mean, they're paying it for that service, but we're not collecting it, so we're not offsetting our cost of dealing with it.
Got it, thank you.
Did you have another question?
Just one follow-up question, is it worth our time to reach out to a larger community of Manchester or Concord or something like that and ask them, is there an automated process they're using to expedite the online transaction, you know, the reconcile process? Or are they doing the exact same process we're doing?
Most of them are doing the same that we have. Credit cards in communities, reconciliation is always a hot topic with the tax collectors, town clerks, and I'm not sure how much it is with GFOA, but we do see the emails that go around saying, you know, what's, what are the best practices for reconciling these?
Wish I was a software engineer, this is a million-dollar idea right here.
Yeah. Well, I was, so I need you to help us understand better, not necessarily for us here, but for the public. Everybody I can imagine is thinking that online transactions would reduce your workload, not increase it.
They do, no.
That you'd either have a lot less traffic at the windows, and therefore, instead of four and a half people, you only need three and a half people, and that other person could spend their time doing the reconciliations. And you kind of glossed over that, I need...
Yep, and I'm happy to have any of you come to our office if you would like to see the process. Do you want to explain what you do, how you start out with the reports and...
So, the first thing we get is a report from our company that takes the online request. And that report that comes in gives us a detail of transactions, who the customer is, what vehicles need to be registered. It's not just for motor vehicle, it's also for vital records, dog licensing, for that one in particular. So, it's going to increase as we get closer to dog licensing, we have a lot, and we do pull them out so that motor vehicles is separate from the dog licensing because the time that it takes to do them. When I print these out, the girls get them, they process this work in between customers that are at the window. So, it's not like we have one person that sits there and that's all they do all day is the online transactions. They have to be done, the customers come first, the ones that are at the window. When it comes to reconciling it, I get that report, I need to keep track of what comes in and the dollar amount, total dollar amount for that day. So, the next day, when I get their reports and how much they've completed, if they haven't done a full sheet, I have to make sure that it goes against a specific batch so that I know another day I might actually have another amount to go against it so that everything has been completed. We also make sure that finance has received the money at the bank. We don't want to process something that hasn't been put into the bank. There have been times when the actual company, we didn't get the report, but yet the money was put in the bank. Now, we've got to backtrack and say, okay, which customers did we miss? And we have to contact support and get reports sent to us. It's a matter of being able to make sure that the money is there, the money has been authorized by the customer, and we have it, our numbers match, the numbers get sent to the state, the numbers get sent to finance, and everything is balancing. So, it's not just motor vehicle, but vital records, dogs, taxes, it's all of it in one, and it just takes a time to make sure that it matches. As Diane said, there are five different accesses that give us this information. So, it's going from one to the next, plus we're balancing each countercler's work. They give us their money, and we do a balancing act for that as well. So, it does add up.
Barbara?
Question for you. Since the DMV has sent all this work down to the towns, do they send you any money? Because I'm sure they didn't lay anybody off, they're still dealing with the same number of heads in their labor force, but now the towns have...
That's a junk question.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to make sure people knew out there that, you know, this work gets handed down to the towns, but there's no money behind it. You're expected just to do it and have a nice day.
There is, there is a state law that past bodies have adopted for us to process. The town does receive, and we charge each customer $3 for each transaction as an agent of the state. So, we do, that's our compensation for...
But that's what you get to keep.
We get to keep $3, yes. And if I could, I don't know, Tom, would it be appropriate, could I just add to something that Brenda said with the reconciliation process? Because I just want to, I just want to make sure that everybody is clear. As she said, we do receive from five different payment vendors. The one that comes from, for the motor vehicle, dog licensing, our town clerk work, that comes in daily, sometimes with anywhere from three to five batches on the report. That just gives us the names of the people. Brenda actually has to print out other reports from the credit card company and then from our system to get the detail as to what needs to be processed just for that. So, there's three reporting that needs, need to be printed and reconciled for one day's work, just for our town clerk credit cards. We also get two to three reports for our tax payment transactions, and then anything that we do debit has to be reconciled. So, we're not just talking, you know, five reports, there are probably on any given day, anywhere from eight to 10 batches of monies that need to be balanced. So, just want to kind of stress that.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? You said, when you get this report, you print it out and then hand it to the clerks, who then go back and enter all the data again manually?
Yep.
That's redundancy, that shouldn't be...
Well, this is actually streamlined.
All right, you have to expand that.
Two, two to three, two to three years ago, we actually printed a check for each transaction, and the girls at the window would have to process the check manually. So, printing it out on a report has streamlined it, and it gives a detail, you get your renewal notice in the mail, and that renewal notice, if you were to mail it in with your check, has a detailed list of all of your vehicles on it. This report that we give to the clerks is that detailed list from the renewal notice.
That clarifies a lot for me. I wish the systems were integrated so you didn't have to do that, but...
And there's a reason why they're not.
Okay.
With motor vehicle and online transactions, the state has to approve vendors. So, what's going on here is that it's, we could get a software genius to make this all automated for us. State's not going to let us do it. It's the state for motor vehicles that we have to follow their rules and regulations. A lot of the passage of the laws going forward has helped streamline some of these processes, but they're still behind the times. You know, like Diane said, she can't go in there and reverse somebody. We made a mistake, Diane, could you revert? No, she can't go in there and say, okay, Brenda, you, instead of a five, you hit a four, let me back out the five and put the, you know, the four or four or five, whatever. No, we have to call the state, and then we have to wait online for the state to do it. And, and, and so, you're sitting there with the customer in front of you, and you're on the phone, and you could see the customer's face getting like, just hit delete. I can't, because the state has motor vehicles and some of this stuff so locked down that we can't automate and that we can't do some of these things. So, it's not a point, and I want to make that point, it's not the town of Merrimack not wanting to automate or go ahead, we have to play with the rules that are given to us from the state with some of this stuff for cars and registrations. And at one point, we couldn't take Visa at the counter. Because they considered us a municipality which was like, if you pay with your Visa card, you get, you can't pay with a Visa card for certain like electric or things of that sort on some of these accounts. And they wouldn't let us take it, they wouldn't let us take it at the counter, but you could pay it. So, it was like, okay, go home and pay with your Visa card if that's what you want to pay for.
Online.
Online. But they could do it online, but they couldn't do it at the counter, and that would frost people as well. So, you know, so, it's getting better, it's not there yet. And like you asked about Concord, Manchester, I don't know how they, they do things, but they're playing with the same rules we are, so.
Good point. Barbara?
I don't know if I should be asking this now, but I figure since we're talking about staffing and processes, we have an election coming up in another couple of months, and I am sure since we are dealing with a high number of cases, you know where I'm going with this, you're already laughing, we're going to get a lot of requests for mail-in ballots, and I'm sure the same rules are going to apply. And if we get them in any kind of volume that we had a year ago, it's, you know, it's not only processing the ballots as we know, Nancy and I have done it with the pre-processing work, but it's also sending all the ballots out with all the cross-checks when they come back in. Is that considered in the staffing as well? Or is that in the budget for general?
That would be, the staffing portion would be in general government, the postage portion is in Diane's budget. So, Diane increased postage this year to cover some of those extra costs. We'll talk about it in general government. We went from one election to three election next year, so some of the staffing cost is increased as well. If COVID is still running rampant come April, and people want to do mail-in ballots and things of that sort, if Diane needs the staff, we'll find a, we'll find a way to get the staff or part-time staff like we've done in the past to help her out.
We did, that's a good point, Barbara, and thank you, Paul. We did put a little bit of money into the budget for part-time help for September and November. It was very minimal, I, what are we at, like, $300? I think that's something like that. We budgeted for 40 hours, I'm sorry, 200, 200 hours, that's our tax money, 200 hours to help with fall elections, just to have something in there. And we did account for a postage increase. I appreciate you bringing up the election piece because that is an area, and just totally went out of my mind, but that does concern me gravely, especially with the initiatives that are happening on the federal level. And if some of these initiatives pass, it's going to upend our whole department. Yep. Yeah, exactly, but in terms of, you know, yeah, I just wanted, I'm just thinking about us here, but it's going to be a mess. Yep, we're going to be in the same bad, yep, with everybody else, but it will totally upend everything, so. And if those pass before the midterms, then this is just, it's all... Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, so you're asking, you were asking for $40,000 additional to make somebody full-time instead of part-time, but your part-time budget right now is $21,000 plus. And I'm assuming the delta there is partly due to insurance and things like that to go to a full-time person. Talk to us about availability of hiring another part-time person. And I know the answer, just, I just want you to say it so that the public can watch.
I'm, I'm, our part-time positions have not worked out so well in our department. We are, every time we train, we get people, they just don't stay. They tell us they want to work part-time, and they move on to other departments that are paying more money or to other towns. The last part-time person that I hired, you know, started asking after two months, when can I get full-time? When can I get full-time? Are there any full-time opportunities? So, we invest heavily, it's not an easy position to come into. You're learning two departments, town clerk work and tax collector work. Merrimack, we're combined, a number of communities, they're not. So, they're learning an extreme amount of information. A full-time person takes six months, six to 12 months to really get them comfortable and trained. A part-time person takes a little bit longer because they have reduced hours. But again, they, it's been a revolving door with our part-time people. So, that's just another hesitation there for even wanting to go advertise and what have you, but we need, we need the help, we need the body. But we do invest a lot of time and energy training people for them to leave.
Okay, and do you currently have a part-time person?
No, that position is vacant. Our part-time person moved into the full-time vacancy when Robin moved down to the town manager's office.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Lady that sits across from Becky now, Kristen's replacement.
Who, that's Robin?
That's Robin, the lady who sits across from Becky, Kristen's replacement is Robin.
Kristen's replacement, yes.
And she's full-time now instead of part-time in your office, even though you...
No, there was, there was another woman, Miss, there was another woman who was part-time when, when Robin from Tax Collector moves over to take Kristen's position.
She moved up to the full-time position.
She moved up because we felt... Because we felt she's already been there six months.
She's already.
She knows.
Seventy-five percent trained.
Trained. We've just got to bring her in to, to continue the training with her, which then left the part-time position is vacant right now. So that's, that's where they stand. They have one vacancy for the part-time.
Okay. Andy? Just, just to make sure I understand, the additional full-time that was requested, there's a salary line of 40,000. That was the full-time person?
That is the.
No, that you removed.
Yes.
But then you added the 24,000 for the part-time.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So in 8107, there's a position 21,416. That's the part-time position. Okay? See that line?
One that's vacant currently.
01248107. Uh, page 127.
Oh, 8107, got it.
Okay, you see that 21416? That, the delta to bring the person on full-time is an additional $40,000. 40,372. So you have to add the 21 plus the 40,370. The additional salary in that department would be 40,372.
On top of what's there.
Well, that's not salary, that's salary.
Salary and benefits.
So I'm going to ask you, can in the future, can we split that number out into salary and benefits?
We can.
You know, full-time benefits plus the delta salary?
Yes, we can.
So that it's a little easier to understand. Because if I look at the other full-time clerks, they're not making that kind of money, even, you know.
No, we can't.
Because, because it's almost $20,000 added on for benefits.
More than that.
More than that, 25?
Because of retirement and health and dental and, health insurance is about 20 grand, dental's another about 1,300. So you write in those two and then 11%. Now it's more for retirement. So, you know, most of that 40,000 is benefits. It's not really more of a, the salary portion of it.
Yeah, the increase in hours is 12 hours a week. It's the benefit, it's the benefits. That's the chunk that's.
And we, we can going forward do that and break it down into salary and benefits.
Just, just because it is confusing for new people, it's confusing for anybody in the public that's looking at it, trying to figure out how come, you know, that's not a whole person. That's, that's only 12 hours extra.
Right. Well, what we try to do is fully loaded and we can.
I understand that.
So that we understand, so that we understand the true cost.
Correct. Yeah, we do need to understand the true cost. There's no doubt about it. But if we could split that into sub-numbers or something so that.
Always looking to improve.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're going to be debating on our budget in three weeks or something like that. And so we'll, we'll have to take that into consideration at that point. But I understand your swamp and, well, I understand you are, I don't understand why. It seems to me, and I still don't understand why, our online transaction, except you and Paul both tried to explain that the state's got limitations on how we can do it. But all over the world, they're doing things where online handles the entire transaction. And so I shouldn't take, printing it out, giving it to somebody, having them enter it and turn around and then trying to reconcile it. It just seems backward.
It's government.
You know, I've heard you come here and say, let's offer online transactions because it's better for the customers. That's great. It is better for the customers. They can do it from home, but it's costing us more. So.
It is, yep. And that's the thing.
The knee-jerk reaction is to say, well, let's have everybody come in and do it here. It'll be cheaper.
That would be perfect world for all of us. Yes, but it's not convenient for the customer and the resident.
And we are trying to provide customer service.
Or consider increasing the fee to be able to help cost, help pick up the cost of what we have to do for it. I'm not suggesting that now, but that is a logical consequence of the impact of being able to do it.
Yeah, instead of spreading the cost, everybody try and get it from the people that are using it. Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that now.
No, I understand.
But it's a thought. Just like, you know.
You've opened that Pandora's box.
Well.
Nancy?
Just when we were talking about this, I think this actually, I was just saying, mentioned to Barbara, this is a great opportunity. It shows us we have a problem here that's, if it's impacting Merrimack, I'm sure it's impacting other communities everywhere. This would be a great piece of legislation for our legislators to bring to the State House and file so that our systems are integrated.
Correct.
And we're not cost shifting and down to the town. So state legislators who are listening, this is, here's a big problem that could potentially be resolved at the state level.
So if I could just clarify, our system is integrated with the DMV. It's not integrated with the credit card piece to the transactions and things, but we are connected with the DMV.
But the part that you did talk about with DMV pushing back for almost an hour just to make a correction change, something like that ought to change, I think. Let me just get Tom real quick. Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, well, I just wanted to add something to the discussion. With, with regard to these online transactions and the credit cards, that the issue, as I see it, and as I look at these reconciliations, it's that there's a lot of timing differences with these online payments versus somebody comes to the counter, hands us a check, we record it, there's no timing difference. The check matches what we've recorded, no issue. With all of these electronic payments, they come in in batches and there are timing differences. There are things that are getting rejected. There are things that are not clearing the day we expect them to. They might clear the, the next day. And that's really what adds a lot of time to the process is, is trying to figure out and, and isolate and identify those timing differences so that we know that we, we are still in balance. We've, we've got these, these differences that we've got, some of them result, require adjustments on our part. Some of them are going to clear themselves up when the timing difference resolves itself. But that adds a lot of, a lot of time to the process versus somebody coming in, plunking down cash on our counter or a check, or even people paying through, through the mail with a check. There's no timing difference.
So aren't there still insufficient funds issues and stuff?
There are, there aren't a lot. There aren't a lot of those, but there are some. We, we get checks, checks that do come back. But again, it's, it's one for one. We identify which transaction it was that, that came back and, and it gets resolved very easily, much more easily than, than those online transactions. Because you really, you gotta, you gotta go through the whole pile of online transactions to identify the timing differences.
Okay. Lon?
Yeah, I just can't resist, having been around a while. It was also simple when Bobby Moral had his Corona portable typewriter on the counter and you could share a joke or a story with him while you're, and you were done.
You know, sometimes, sometimes life seemed simpler back then, but.
Because it was.
It was, but if you wanted to get your truck registered, you had to go to DMV or if you wanted to do something else.
That's true, too.
So, you know, there are a lot of things that were much simpler, but I agree. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate your inputs and, and I'm sure we're all going to continue to be in a fog for a while. So we'll, we'll pass on any questions that come up in between now and a couple of weeks from now. I will probably take you up on that. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, we're skipping media tonight. We'll pick them up somewhere along the way. Which brings us to communications, which is the O5 tab in the budget. Communications is all part of the police department. And so we're getting into a stream of police issues. Welcome, Chief.
So I won't steal too much of the police chief's thunder.
Yeah.
But I just want to say that, as you'll see here, there's, they're looking to increase their dispatchers to one more full-timer position in the budget for a fully loaded cost of about $76,000. The chief will explain what, what that's entailed and why he's bringing that forward. And in this budget, there will see some large equipment and some large maintenance costs associated with that equipment that we're looking to continue with. And he has an explanation for that as well. Like I said, I don't want to steal too much of his thunder. But so take it away.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of town council, it's a pleasure to be here as always, discuss the budget of the communications division. I wanted to go through a couple items. And of course, at the end, if you have any questions about items I don't cover, feel free to let me know. The first one, as Town Manager McCallie mentioned, was we came to you a couple of months, well, probably six, seven months ago, regarding our communications issues, our radio structure, how it was, it wasn't picking up in certain areas of town. We did a lot of testing. We were going to move to continue with our current network by building more sites out. And then we sort of fell into the grace of Nashua, who agreed to allow us to jump on the 800 megahertz. And I think everyone was present here for that meeting. So during that time, we also looked internally as how we can better prove our communication center. And one of the things we immediately identified is that it's simply not fair to have one dispatcher on a shift. Currently, Monday through Friday, there's only one dispatcher available. So if you have a house fire, bad accident, you call in for med flights, that's a lot for one person to handle. And simply, it's not efficient. Now, does, are the nights that are slow? Yes, there are. But we need to make sure that there's enough people in there to be able to make the phone calls and meet the needs of both the police and fire department. So that's why I'm proposing adding another dispatcher to occupy that Monday through Friday overnight shift. As Town Manager McCallie mentioned, the fully loaded cost is $76,000. I do have the breakdown, Mr. Chairman, if you would like it.
No, I can even figure it out myself. Go ahead.
So it's 40, about $44,000 for wages. Health insurance is 19.5, dental insurance is 13, and retirement is $6,300. So it's a rough ballpark.
6,300?
For retirement, yeah.
Okay.
So anyone have any questions about the new dispatch position?
And that's for nights, did you say?
Yeah, currently it's, our shifts are staffed up with two dispatchers at least on day shift. We have a day shift supervisor in there. And the only shift that's not two is on the overnight from Monday through Friday, sorry, Sunday through Thursday, because we have a part-time dispatcher that comes in on Friday and Saturday evenings.
Barbara?
So if there are two dispatchers on during the evening, I mean, sorry, the night shift, and it's quiet, what do dispatchers do?
Do a lot of paperwork, all of our data entry for all tickets that are issued, warnings, defective equipment. They do a lot of data entry.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's always work to be done.
Correct. And we want, you know, there's criminal records that we have to run through for pistol permits and such, and they process those as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
But it, it does make a lot of sense to have two there, because if one has to leave for a few minutes, there still needs to be somebody at the door, at the.
And our staff is great, because the patrolmen, our supervisors will come in and give them breaks so they can, you know, heat up their food, go to the restroom. But it's more of like, if it's a critical incident, all of our people are out there with the fire department and stuff. So there's not going to be a chance to give them that break.
How much training requirement is there for somebody to be able to fill in as a backup like that? I mean, does everybody, anybody could go in and sit down for five minutes or something like that?
So we make all of our patrolmen go through it. We encourage firefighters to come up to do it as well. Our supervisors have to go in and it's not, they're not getting fully certified as dispatch, right? You know, fortunately, police officers generally know the right questions to ask when they pick up the phone because they're out there dealing with it on the street. But a lot of the confusion is the data entry into our message, our records management system, how to tone out the adipraz, using the radios and such like that. So if it does get really busy and it's not police-related, the officer will go in there, assist them with phone calls and, you know, they'll tell them who to call and such like that. But not, they're not full-certified dispatchers.
Okay. But they've, they've all been at least versed in it so that anybody could go in and.
Correct, because.
Sit for five minutes or what?
There's always frustrating moments when you're on the road as a police officer and you try and call on the radio, no one answers, you know, but believe, they're busy and we want to make sure that they're aware of that. And once they sit in there for a shift, they know it can get really busy. It can get really, really busy. Windows, and we talked about this before, you know, they have the window traffic, that's a lot of people coming in the lobby. They have the telephones, they have E911, they have the CAD, and then they also have officers calling, demanding things and such.
No, I'm sure they don't. Nancy?
Just a couple of issues. One, we know, but I'm not sure the public understands, when you talk about communications, you're talking about fire and police.
Correct, so.
So even though you're addressing it, the calls that come in at night, which are very busy for fire, I mean, that's all 24 hours. So we need to understand that.
So our communication system handles police and fire, 911. So if a 911 call comes in, it goes through Concord and then it gets transferred out down to our dispatch center. So they're actively talking to the other person. So it's very complex. It's not just a police matter. So I appreciate you pointing that out.
And I think, you know, the training, not everyone can be a dispatcher because you're personality-wise, you have to be able to be calm and cool. And not everybody can do that. You can be trained to do the mechanics, but inherently, there has to be a certain personality that can stay calm in the middle of emergencies. So.
Correct. And, and we've had several, I know as Diane mentioned, about part-time dispatchers that they just don't work out because they can't figure it out or they can't multitask quick enough. Most of the personalities that we have in there with the, you know, they are the calm, cool, but it's the other side of things where they can't keep up with the pace.
Right.
You know, it's not, it's not for everyone.
Right. Exactly. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public appreciated what that position was for both.
And this also addresses a need. Back in 2000, right before COVID, Town Manager Cabanelle put together a little group between myself, police and fire, to work on the communication issues. And this was one of the communication issues that were brought forward to us is the overnight shift. And how do, how do we help? We laugh about technology a couple minutes ago. Well, now that everybody has a cell phone, they see an accident, they're picking up the phone saying, I don't know if they called, so let me call. And we're getting repetitive calls on, you know, on, but we can't say, is that repetitive? Because we don't know the next call that might be a heart attack victim or that the dispatcher has to pick up. So that's why they're looking at, well, this was to address one of those needs is, is the overnight to give them two people in there so that if there is an active ambulance scene going or an act of fire or an act of police, we can dedicate a person to that and the other person can still handle the calls coming in.
So slightly off topic, but in, in line with what you just said, if you see an accident and five people call in, how, how do you handle those five different calls? Do you, do you take down information from each and every person?
So if it's going with the 911, they're, usually 911 will start sorting it out, but they'll pass it on to us. And our dispatches are trained to know that, you know, if they're saying the same exact location, it's, it's the same accent. You know, sometimes it's a little odd when it's on the highways because people get confused. They think this is 93, they think, you know, and they talk about mile markers, they pass this. And it can get confusing on the highway, but usually general descriptions are pretty good where they can narrow it down that this is a duplicate call. But they still take down the information because what if, if they witnessed something with a guy, you know, if a person was impaired or wherever, we want to talk to those people after.
All right. So I guess where I'm going with that is, do you encourage people to call if they see something?
Absolutely.
I mean, because you could get 20 calls on, on an accident on the highway.
Yep.
And, but, but I, you know, I, there's also the tendency by people to say, I don't want to get hooked in. I don't want to have my numbers registered and have, so there's, there's always this, this seesaw between whether I should call to report it because maybe somebody hasn't, or I'm sure somebody has by now, so I'm not going to because I don't want to get stuck in the system.
We, we get people that want to remain anonymous all the time. So that's something we're used to dealing with.
That's okay.
Yep.
For people to do that.
Chances are, is if there's no blue lights around or it looks like there's still smoke or people are still coming out of the cars, no one's called yet, so call.
All right. That was a public service announcement, too.
I like that.
Encourage people to do that. Okay, are there any other questions on the concept of a dispatcher?
I just want to refresh my memory on the 800 megahertz. That is the, that is the shelter that we still need to purchase to complete the, the 800 megahertz.
I can jump into that next if you want.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll just skip right back to, so we'll start with 8506, communications equipment. So we, we had already begun the purchase. We came to you during last year's budget season. Sorry, yeah, last year's budget season, after last year's budget to, to purchase a first phase. We were, the, the whole total project is about 1.4 million dollars to be on the Nashua 800 megahertz system. We recognized that was a hard pill for the town of Swalwell at once. So we created a creative way that, to break it out into two, two phases. So the first phase is probably going to be completed at the end of the month here. Right now, we have all of our port, all of what they call subscribers, our mobile radios, our portable radios, those are all programmed. We have those all. Now they need to install the dispatch piece to connect our dispatch center to Nashua. That's already been, well, that's already been agreed to, paid for. The money's been found. The next part on 8506 is the phase two, which is where we're going to build a site in Merrimack, most likely at Parker, Parker Road Water Tower. And that's where we're going to be buying that structure to house all this new equipment, put up the new antennas, connect the phone lines and such. And that's where that, that large portion of the $760,000 is to complete that next And that's where that, that large portion of the seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is to complete that next phase. And that way, both police and fire will be using the eight hundred megahertz system, which for the viewers, we discovered that this system is much more reliable, effective in larger buildings. Currently, we can't broadcast in and out of some larger buildings in town. And we did a lot of testing and it works out great. So that's the piece that's to finish up the project and we should be good to go. Along with that, though, us being on City of Nashua, we're required to obviously operate underneath their standards. So if you look at eight-three-three-five maintenance communication equipment, you're going to see some of those subscriber fees that I mentioned before during that presentation for the whole radio structure. Those, those fees, the system upgrade agreement, front of maintenance, that's to ensure that we have the latest software, the latest equipment, and they do a maintenance plan through Motorola and the City of Nashua to swap out this piece this year, so forth and so on. For us to be on the City of Nashua's radio system, which if we try to build a system of this ourselves, we cannot afford to do this.
How much? There was an estimate down.
I think it was like four million.
Five-one.
Five-one?
Five-one.
It was wild. My head was spinning back then too, so.
Which I think the public, I'm sorry, I really want to emphasize that. Because this is a lot of money. You're talking about a million. But the alternative was, and this was, I think a point has to be made. This was talked about for like three years. The police department, the fire department, the town manager did a lot of research on this, if my understanding is correct. And you came to this and thank God, we found our alternative, but if we did not, we were going to have to spend five million dollars.
We would have to spend five million for the eight hundred megahertz system to upgrade a system that we had. And upgrade the system that we had, we were looking at about a million, a million-two. And Motorola was not guaranteeing us ninety percent, ninety-five percent coverage. And that was the big kicker, why the previous town administrator, manager and myself never went with those systems is because it was not, they couldn't say to us, "Spend this million-two and you're going to get a better service." They could never say that. So that's what we held off. And like Brian, Chief, Chief said, is that it fell into our lap about this eight hundred megahertz system. And Motorola, first thing out of their mouth, "Yes, we'll guarantee ninety-five percent coverage throughout the town with this." So that was another key factor of why we kept on digging into this. And then it was only like a couple hundred thousand dollars more than upgrading what we currently had and we didn't know if it was going to work or not.
There's no guarantee at all. So, so City of Nashville, it charges us per, per mobile radio and portable radio user fee. And that's what you see in the radio user fee. It's thirty dollars per month per device.
So although it's extremely expensive to have a lot cheaper than the alternative.
Correct. And it's going to be a lot safer for all the officers and firefighters working out there.
And Mr. McCallie, what impact does this particular thing only have on our tax rate?
For every fifty thousand dollars, it's roughly a penny on the tax rate. So for this roughly eight hundred thousand dollars, it's about sixteen cents on the tax rate. And if you remember when I did the presentation, I was going up twenty cents, roughly sixteen cents, give or take.
Of that?
Is, of that, is, is for this, this project. And it was eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand with fire because they had to buy some additional radios. So it's about sixteen, give or take, cents on the, the cent increase is basically for this upgrade.
Okay. Everybody remember that? Because that's by far, and I'm not, I'm only suggesting doing this not to discourage you, but the public to understand the, I think, the majority by far of any, right at this point, at this point, proposed increase is related to the safety issue, okay? Sixteen cents projected out of the projected twenty cents. That's significant and I think it had to be stated emphatically. That's all.
So this money is coming straight out of the budget. We don't have any capital reserve accounts to peg on.
There is no capital reserve that we can, we can try to nip away at on this. This is basically coming.
No grants or infrastructure money or any of that kind of stuff?
We have applied for a grant. It's working its way through Congress right now. I, hopefully sometime in the next eight weeks, we'll know one way or the other. Deputy Chief Charlton was instrumental in going for this grant for the full one point four million dollars. We, we haven't got the, we haven't, as my grandfather said, you don't have the money in your pocket, so don't spend it.
That's right.
So we don't have the grant in our pocket yet. We've been told it looks good, it looks good, it looks good. It's all depending on what's going on in Washington right now. So, but we have applied for a grant, but right now, it's coming out of our, our budget. And if we get, and if we get the grant between now and deliberative session or, or even if we get the grant going on in before September, that will help offset some of the tax rate increase as well with it. But right now, we have to put it in the budget. We have to gross. The other thing, remember, and I, I know I keep saying this, but for the people at home, we have to gross appropriate. So even if we get these grants such as the Safer Grant, or if we get this money, we'd still have to put in the full amount into the appropriation side and then put the amount in the, in the revenue side. So it'd still show an increase in, in the appropriation. It just wouldn't show an increase in the tax rate.
Exactly. The tax rate, that's where you'd see it.
That's where you'd see it.
Right. But that's, that's the point I want to try and make again and again and again. Is that because we're gross appropriating, you're putting the money in the budget, you're going to see the increase. But if we can feel confident that there might be some money on the backside in the revenue column to, to offset that, then that is, that helps.
Takes a curse.
And, but we won't know that yet. And even if it doesn't come until after the budgets are approved, we're not spending the money just because we want to spend the money. If we get the grant, we'll have that extra money left over to reduce taxes in September or next year in the general fund. So I mean, it, it, it's not like we're going to just pad the budget and spend it. We're going to, we're going to do what we can to try and keep this under control. But anyway, that's still, so it's seven hundred and sixty-three plus seventy-eight, or almost seventy-eight that are associated with, with this increase for this year, right?
Correct.
And the seventy-eight is an ongoing number, the seventy-eight thousand, the user fees and stuff like that?
Correct.
So we would expect that to be an ongoing thing?
Yes.
But the seven hundred and sixty-three?
One time and done, and that's, that's all it is.
At least for ten years or something.
Well, no, with the maintenance, it shouldn't be a more large cost because you're paying it every year to have those pieces swapped out.
That's part of the seventy-eight thousand?
Yes.
Is the maintenance fees?
The maintenance fees and the, what's called a system upgrade, that's all part of that.
Okay.
You know, this is, if there's a, you know, a large piece that we would have to purchase, we would know ahead of time. City of Nashville will let us know, but that's why you pay these fees so you don't have to really do that. Like their, their cost is usually when they add another site in the city, which they don't have to because they have perfect coverage, so.
Okay. Until we go to another new system in ten years or fifteen.
I promise you, Mr. Chairman, I will not be talking about it.
I won't be here, so.
I won't either.
Are we all set on that? The only other large-
Any other questions on that? No, okay. Do you have questions, Ron? Okay.
The only other large cost, you'll notice the price difference is under eight-three-three-four maintenance office equipment, RMS system. As you know, I came before the council to approve, moving on to CIP to purchase a new records management system. So this is a new annual fee that's associated with that record management system.
Thirty-four thousand is the annual fee?
Correct.
How much does the record management system cost?
It was about two hundred and fifty thousand. So just a little backstory, during the, that CIP, I think I mentioned this, that a lot of record management system now are going subscription-based, where it's a yearly fee, you don't own the product at all. And those quotes that we're getting was a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year for a six-year contract. So we decided to purchase outright with a different vendor. Our current annual fee is sixteen thousand dollars. But this program is definitely more robust, more user-friendly, as I stated before, so it's well worth the money.
Okay. I, I know they are going to a lot of subscription things and we see that in our personal computers with Microsoft Office and stuff like that. Seems like somehow we can't do without those things anymore these days. Anyway, okay. So is that your summary or is there any-
That's all I have for communications, if anyone has any questions.
Any other questions? Barbara?
Chief, what is a radio voting system? I don't think it's what I think it is.
No.
So, so that's currently the system where we're on, where basically it's a, it's all telephone lines. It picks up the best signal, so it goes to that person, that, that tower first, and it basically combines all of them together. So basically, it's choosing the best site to transmit off of. That's the current system we have now.
And that will go away at some point.
It's not going to completely go away because we need to have redundancy where if the other system goes down, we have to have something.
You have something for backup.
We're, we're still trying to analyze which sites we can take offline, but there is going to be some decreased costs. But you gotta also remember that there is also a cost that we have for new, what's called E-lines to Nashua and eventually our site to Parkard Drive. So it might be negligible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One other question to try and help me understand, eighty-two oh three and eighty-two oh four, the operating supplies and uniforms, I guess.
Correct.
Couple of years back, back in oh eighteen, nineteen, we spent like two thousand dollars in those two categories and now we're spending seventy-five hundred dollars in those two categories. Operating supplies went eighty-two oh three, it's called operating supplies up top, it's called operating supplies both times. Okay, I was looking at the wrong one. So office supplies and operating supplies. Went from three hundred ninety-five in oh eighteen, nineteen to thirty-five hundred now. And I'm assuming it's planning to keep on going at thirty-five hundred.
Correct. As of right now, I have no, there's no desire to keep it any lower because we like to switch out our batteries for our radios. And those batteries, they're expensive, right? So they're approximately about ninety-eight dollars per. So as we rotate radios, we rotate batteries as well. And that also includes our backup radios for the volunteers that come out or any events that we have. Many of the buildings here in Town Hall has a portable, schools have portables, so that's right rotating all the batteries. I'm not sure what it was in eighteen, nineteen, I wasn't sure when we increased that. But it's probably, if I recall, it's because we saw that we were, we weren't budgeting it correctly and we weren't having enough to rotate the batteries.
Well, in nineteen twenty, you spent two thousand one hundred, but in twenty twenty-one, you only spent seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. So it, it just seems like this is a huge jump. I'm just wondering, is thirty-five hundred or thirty-three hundred annually the right kind of numbers for where we need to be with batteries?
Right. I can, I can read such a little bit more about why that was an off-year. I'm not sure if we purchased some on the tail end of the year before, because the year before you said was thirty, twenty-one?
Was two thousand, twenty-one hundred, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
You know, it depends on the cycle of the battery. I know we got, and, and as you can see, if you look at, in seventeen, eighteen, we spent no money on batteries. We have to look back at when we recycled radios and things of that sort. I know we did a big lithium upgrade in one of those years, and I can't remember what year it was.
Yeah, I honestly don't.
I don't remember.
Well, so if it's cyclical, we shouldn't be doing thirty-five hundred every year. We ought to be doing it every second year or third year or something like that.
We just got to look at, you know, and with the new radios, I don't know. Because we just went with all new radios, so I don't know.
I can sit down with the town manager and-
And figure it out.
Figure out a better idea.
Okay. And the office supplies went up from two thousand or seventeen hundred to, to four thousand and, and that same time period. But, but they jumped up higher, forty-eight and fifty-five the last couple of years. And so I'd, I'd, just questioning, you know, what are we doing differently? Office supply, computer paper and supplies and miscellaneous office supplies, doesn't seem like it should make that big of a jump, but.
I can look at it as well.
Okay.
I wasn't, I didn't see the seventeen, eighteen books, so. I didn't see the seventeen, eighteen books, so I just wanted.
Yeah, in the front of our budgets, it, it goes back as far as that.
Take care.
But anyway.
Look into it.
Okay. That's, that's one of the things that, that I, I like having the access to back years to see what. And in our breakout budgets, we only get back to twenty twenty-one. That one, one year of actual instead of a couple of years of actual, so it's, anyway. All right, that's all the questions that I had. Barbara?
Yeah, on education and training, eighty-three fifty-two. There's another fairly big jump there. Are we going to try to send more officers to training classes?
So we're, they're under called Apco Certification, which is a public communications group, organization that does training. They then require, you obviously, I added a line for the dues.
Yeah.
I mean, so that was five hundred dollars, I think, around there. So they require twenty-four hours of training now to be, to remain certified. So that's where the increase are. You know, each class could range from six hundred dollars to two fifty. So by every dispatcher having to have twenty-four hours, I felt there's necessary to increase that lineup.
Is that per annual or?
Per annual.
Oof. Okay, thank you.
Personally, I think that's well worth it.
It's well worth it. It's just an increase and so we're trying to understand.
Oh, I understand, but I-
And that's something the deputy chief and I have realized that in the past, they didn't really receive enough training. It should be continuing training. We always focus on, we gave them training, we sent them classes, but there's much more that they could be doing for training.
Well, I think there's a certain amount of expectations that are placed. And how can you expect when you're not giving people a reasonable continuing education, training? So I think that's, I just wanted to express my support for not questioning it.
And honestly, the budget went up from nine thousand to twelve thousand and three thousand dollars is for that training. There was also in twenty-one, twenty-two, I believe, around there, we negotiated a contract with the union because dispatchers are underneath the union. And that's one of the things they asked for is more training for the job to be included in the budget. So that's where it's at. It's more of a contractual thing. And I forgot to say beforehand that this department is one hundred percent union. It's covered by two separate unions. They're underneath agreement next year for a two percent cost of living increase.
Okay. Good. If there's no more questions on communications, we can move to police, which is back a tab to number four, to those in the book. And I don't know where you are if you're online. Finley's not with us today.
I know.
To give us a hard time about being online, but I, I have my computer, but I just, dealing with them both is difficult and I put all my notes on paper. Anyway, Paul, you want to summarize or start off on police or?
Police are, majority of the individuals that are in this division and in this department budget for police are unionized. Between two unions, and they're, like I said, their cost of living is, is a two percent cost of living increase. There's a lot of ebbs and flows as you go through the, the full budget. Retirement is because of the salary increases, things of that sort. There are a couple of things that I do want to bring to light is that a vehicle fuel has increased eighteen thousand dollars. That is because, as you can see, you go to the pump, it's sitting at three twenty-nine over at, at, at Mobile. But we get a little bit different, but we had to increase our, from two dollars and twenty-five cents to what the new figures is closely averaging and we're looking at eighteen months in advance. We try to go out to get the best price we can on gasoline. That's our best estimate. But in this, because they do drive, a police officer's office is the road and they do drive around. And so they use a lot of fuel and that's why that increase is there. That's a big one. The other one is vehicles, and I know the chief's going to talk about that, so I don't want to steal his thunder on the vehicles. But as we know, because of the chip shortage, it doesn't mean that police vehicles were, were saved and with the chips and things of that sort. So the, the cost of vehicles have gone up for, for police as well and what we're seeing in the next year or so, as well as the outfitting of those vehicles. So it's, it's to better estimate where we might be in eighteen months when we do buy three new, it's three, it's a cycle of three in this budget. So we're on a three, we are on, with the police, the rolling stock for police vehicles, we have ten vehicles that are for patrol, dedicated to patrol and we replace them every three years, around every hundred thousand miles in those three years. And it's three, three, four. And this year, we're in a, in a cycle of three, replacing three of them. So I'll let Brian go and, and discuss more about the intricacies of some of the other increases throughout his budget.
Thank you. So I'll step to eight-two-zero-three, operating supplies. You're going to see a large increase from this past budget. That's because the fiscal year prior, we met with then-Town Manager Cabanelle and Assistant Town Manager McCallie, and we agreed to purchase a lot of ammunition and other items with personnel savings that year so we could- basically bring the tax dollar down for the that, this current cycle. So that's why we're putting that money back into that fund, cuz we're gonna need to buy ammunition again. And also, we increased it um about forty-five hundred dollars because the price of ammo, I'm sure, is no surprise, has gone up, if you can actually get it. So that's where it is, so basically, we brought it back to the the level that it was in years prior. And then we also increased it another forty-five hundred dollars to cover the anticipated cost of the rising prices of ammo. Cuz as you know, we we have to train a lot, so we go through a lot of ammo.
Now, shh, sorry, sorry Chairman. Um the ammo, though, it's it's, you gotta buy some special ammo though sometimes, right? It's, I I know you talked to me about it a little bit, but could you explain?
I'll let the deputy chief Tarleton speak about the type of ammo's we carry.
All right. Um yeah, so the stuff, the ammunition that we have to purchase for uh the academy training, which we do frequently, whether it's a new recruit or we're sending officers up for in-service training, is a frangible, non-toxic round. So before, it was just non-toxic, but now it has to be frangible because they had some backsplash issues that were creating some safety issues for the officers that were on the line, so.
So define frangible for us?
Frangible, basically, when it when it hits uh a barrier or an object, it just, it breaks apart, it starts to 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 fragment. Is basically what that is. So it's it's very special, it's very particular ammo, it has a special primer, it's so it is almost twice the amount of normal training ammo ammunition that we would use in our outdoor range. Um so the price of that stuff has gone up, and like the chief was saying, because there's been such ammo shortages, now if you can get your hands on ammo, which has been very difficult, uh the price has almost doubled. Uh that's starting to come down now, cuz some of the, like Remington, I guess, is ma- manufacturing ammunition again. So the costs are starting to come down, but it's still, we have an order that we're still waiting on. Um that's what, almost a year now, we've had to wait um on one order of ammunition, so. Um but anyways, it's very expensive, um especially the stuff that we have to use at the academy, so.
Can we train with different rounds? Uh we use obviously the, you know.
You're gonna either have to pull the mic or I mean I'm.
So we train with different rounds, we we don't use expensive rounds to train. Um on, we carry hollow point rounds that are more pricier than the the range rounds that we use. So and then we have the rounds for our um our rifles in the cars. So it's 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 a lot of rounds that we have to go through and we have to qualify. Every time we qualify, an officer on rifle, it's probably at least eighty eighty rounds he uses, and then on pistol, around eighty rounds as well. And that's, you know, every year we do that, and then we also train outside of the qualification period, so it's, we go through a lot anyway.
Use of force training, an officer could discharge between the pistol and rifle, in the course of a week, hundreds of rounds, literally. So it's, there's a lot of.
That's nothing in comp- in training. I mean, that's not enough to build muscle memory. That's where you get, that that that's where you get officers shooting somebody with a gun instead of a taser, because they haven't put enough rounds through a gun, so I I mean, my full support on on the ammo, I wish you had more.
And and honestly, we do, but we also try to be, you know, cognizant of the budget and, you know, but we also, this past year, you know, we made a commitment that we increased our use of force training to four days this year, uh four days in a row. Next year, we're gonna try for five. Because that's how dedicated we are and think it's that important to train and how the officers train in situational based scenarios.
But I appreciate your expertise, cuz I have no, but as soon as you said that, I went, that makes perfect sense, but I never would have thought of that, but again, having your opinion is valuable. And and by far and away, this ammo goes to training, right? I mean, we don't, you you don't discharge firearms on an annual basis. Hopefully, much at all.
Most of it is is training, absolutely.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, we put down animals. And that's hopefully, that's all we have to use our, you know, our our guns for, is to put down ammo, so.
You know, so so by far and away, this is, this is training expenses. To keep you guys in a position to where you can do safely.
That's right.
Safely do your jobs.
Correct.
The the number has gone up a tremendous amount, as you pointed out. I mean, if I look back and I lost the the item, you're at thirty thousand or something, eighty-two oh three. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was averaging ten to fifteen thousand up until through last year. Well, but you said that was low because you were able to use some other monies to to pay for that, but.
Correct.
But you were at fifteen and now you're at thirty.
I feel is necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, this new, this academy, the ammunition that I was referring to, they just started that about, what, two years ago? Um that came into effect and that was uh a huge jump for us, um in expense.
And and we still have three vacancies that we're trying to fill, that will potentially have to all go through the academy and use these rounds, and so that's where a lot of cost is.
And and they don't just charge you for the rounds that are used there, you have to provide the rounds yourself?
Yeah, every agency brings their own rounds. Um they tell you what kind, like the deputy said, it has to be the frangible, non-toxic.
Is that efficient? I mean, why don't they just go buy a thousand rounds and and charge you for them? You'd think sending them to one place would be better than eighteen people bringing their own stuff, I mean.
I don't know how they're charged back, and I'm not sure if I would really trust this, trust the state getting the best price. You know, we 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 go out to bid every year for, well, this year, uh for ammunition, and we make sure we get the the best price out there. You know, and who knows, I wouldn't wanna rely the town's money on someone else's, cuz they might just say, hey, we're gonna go with this and that's just stuck.
Bill you to send somebody there, you just think it, I would think it would be part of the cost of sending somebody would be the cost.
They don't, they do not bill us to.
To send somebody to the?
No.
Academy?
We cover their salaries. Yeah, there's no, there's no payment for them to go through there, that's funded through different uh programs throughout the state.
Okay.
It's twelve hundred rounds per trainee is typically what the amount of ammunition is that they'll use when they're up there.
Okay. I, okay. If I was a training officer up there, I'd be a little more nervous with eighteen different people bringing their own ammunition, but.
They they look, they're they're pretty good. They'll check, they they do inspections, they check to make sure that no one's bringing any funky reloads or anything like that, everyone is, everyone has to be used, especially now. Um if you don't have the right stuff, that you simply don't, you don't shoot.
You simply don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Quick question, you mentioned you have three open positions, is that what you said?
Correct.
Philosophical question, are you having trouble filling positions?
Absolutely. It's not uncommon throughout the whole state or throughout the whole nation now. Um it's to find good people, um it's just tough and that's, we made a commitment that we're not gonna settle, cuz that's where you get into problems, right? So we are pretty rigorous with our with our process and make sure that we get the appropriate people. And we're gonna be posting on the process soon and hopefully get three, but if we get two or one.
Maybe you'll get some people who wanna get out of certain places.
That is a conversation that we've been having, that we need to start adverts, advertising nationwide. Because there's a lot of places that are not as, we're very fortunate in this community, that we're very pro-police and a lot of community support. That's not like other places in other states like Wisconsin and.
Which is what I was gonna take advantage of the opportunity to say that. That hopefully, the police department does feel supported, not only by the council, but by the community.
Absolutely.
And I think that, but and that doesn't mean they're on expectations. Part of my personal response is you've always demonstrated why I should be loyal to you. Because you have a high quality um performance by the, you know, and a and a good reputation within the town. So I just wanted to be able to verbalize that and hopefully, all the members of the police department feel that support.
We we do, and like I said, I think it has a lot to do with the officers we hire, the community programs, although last year was kinda different, we weren't able to do a lot of them. Um but, you know, the programs that we do offer, I think, engages us with the community, so we know that we have your support as well as the community's support.
And and we have gone through several iterations of trying to get police officers in. And a couple have come through that we were ready to look into potentially offering the job to them, but there was one thing or two things that just didn't feel right and we said, okay, we'll pass. We're not settling just to get bodies in, especially like the chief said in our police department, which we we have a standard and we're trying to adhere to that standard and and not just sign off on trying to get people in because we need bodies, it's it's not that at all, so uh hopefully uh you'll hear a little bit about a new software package, we're going out and and there's a new uh thing with the police officers that uh um when you go out, you can advertise on this website and it goes all over the place and people see that you're looking and they can apply through our website.
It's time to think out of the box, right? So we're talking about sending people.
I'm sure there's some really good experienced police officers that wanna move away from places and I wouldn't blame them.
Even around here, we always typically focus around southern New Hampshire, but, you know, we had a discussion that we're gonna start going to the north country too as well to start peppering advertising and stuff like that, because who knows, you know, we gotta try, we gotta try different things to get some people, get a full staff finally.
Okay. Nancy.
Murphy. Thank you, Chief. Um I have a question. I used to sit on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee at the State House, and one of the things I was very surprised to learn, uh while there, was that depending upon the department, um I'm just thinking in terms of hiring and I just wondered what we do here. Um not every department uh did substance abuse or mental health evaluations of prospective candidates. What do we do in Merrimack? I mean, I know this is all, just talking about choices and how do, how does that work for Merrimack?
So I'll I'll just talk about the process briefly, it won't take too long. Uh first, we advertise, they apply, we conduct a written test, if they pass the written test by a score of seventy or higher, they move on to the physical test, where they have to pass the academy standards to move on to what's called an oral board, which is a panel of people that we choose to sit on to interview the candidate. Once the panel meets, they make suggestions to myself and the deputy chief. We sit down, figure out which candidates we wanna propose a conditional offer to. They get a conditional offer, and then we start the rigorous background, which includes polygraph, obviously, background investigation, medical, and also psychological. Which we found that it's a, it's a benefit for us to do, because sometimes the doctor we use will identify some characteristics that we don't want in our department.
And does that, i- is substance abuse part of that or?
That that's that's part of the psychological exam.
Okay, good, thank you.
She goes into all those, I forget the name of all the tests she does, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I, we were surprised and and we were told that depending upon the the funding of different departments, that's what really determined what kind of, so I, we were, many of us were really surprised, so thank you for that.
And throughout the work of the LEAC Commission, that has now changed, that that's a requirement to have a psychological exam and also the state uh reimburses you up to three hundred dollars, which we've already taken advantage of a couple of times.
Barbara?
For under uniforms, you have a hundred dollars for K-nine. Does Dallas get a vest or something? He has his official working vest, does he have armor?
That is a contracted agreement that the person with the K-nine gets an extra hundred dollars in their uniform allowance.
Okay, just wondered.
It's contractual for the officer who is the K-nine to get his K-nine patches and stuff.
Get his own armor? You guys get armor, I guess.
He has some, yes.
Okay.
So on the uniforms, if they're blonde, especially, you know, they get another hundred dollars, up to two hundred dollars, so.
And let's see, under building and maintenance eighty-two, eighty-three twenty-one, looks like it went up about ten thousand dollars based on the last um total expenditures. Get anything special planned over there? Not that there isn't a lot of work to do, probably.
So, please, town manager McCallie can speak to that a little bit better.
Yeah, I was talking to you.
Oh, no, so so we.
We just went over it yesterday.
I thought you wanted to talk. Uh so, we've been trying to, as you know, we're hopeful that we're gonna be moving to a new facility at some point, so we've been trying to. I'm not saying Band-Aid things, we're been trying to reduce how much money we put into the building if we're not gonna be this long. We have identified several areas that need to be corrected, including the tile floor, next to dispatches, cracked tiles, it's unsafe, and possibly lobby of the police departments to make the appearance look a little better, it's cracked as well, um so that's where there's a little bit of change. I had a couple of things, if I could just go through and highlight some.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, we.
No worries.
Went off track.
Um so eighty-three fifty-two, education and training, um this, I increased it by five thousand dollars. Um once again, that's mainly because the LEAC Commission has required the state to have everyone do twenty-four hours of training per year. We typically do more than that. Um training is the best thing our officers and employees can go through. And we're finding that the training is, used to be free at the academy, but they're they're not really offering too many classes anymore. And you actually have to pay for, you know, outside vendor to teach classes. So that's that. And then um just real quick, I'll touch on the vehicles, eighty-five oh three. Um you'll see, it went up about twenty-one thousand dollars. Um that's for patrol vehicles, those SUVs that'll be on the road in patrol. That's to associate costs with the the more accurate upfitting costs, where we strip one cruiser, put it all in a new cruiser, decal it up, sometimes you might have to get new cages, because believe it or not, the carbonary manufacturers like to change the dimensions every so often. So, so that's where the cost is, that's why I see a little bit of an extra cost there. And uh the other, all I wanna like to point out is uh eighty-four sixty, you see, I added a line item for new handguns. We like to rotate our handguns out every five or six years, obviously because you wanna ensure that there's not gonna be misfires. Um and as, you know, rounds go through it, there could be issues. Spoke to town manager McCallie, who with the personnel savings with our, all of our vacancies, um he's agreed to allow us to purchase it this fiscal year, out of all the savings we have from the open positions we've got. So that was about forty-five thousand dollars. Um and we'll be trading in our other firearms, so that'll be about fifteen thousand dollars, so we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars in cost to outfit the entire PD with new handguns.
Say that a number again?
It's forty-five thousand dollars to outfit the entire, all sworn officers with new handguns. Forty-five thousand, that includes um the hand, the the pistol, the new holster that would require, also the flashlight that's attached to the light, um the pistol. And the optic on top, basically, now pistols are coming out with red dot, well, uh an optic on top that has a red dot. It just builds better confidence, it's more sure, it's more accurate shooting, it's the newest thing and it's pretty slick and it's 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 interesting.
Laser dot or something?
Yeah, similar to that, and um uh the other, the other portion of that, Andy's chomping at the bits.
I can't wait till he what he says.
And the other portion of the forty-five thou, as I mentioned, we'd be trading our Glocks right now, and that'd be about fifteen thousand dollars in savings, so it'll be reduced to about thirty thousand dollars in cost.
Did you have something?
I was just curious, are you, are you going with Glocks again, or are you gonna go to a New Hampshire manufacturer?
You put me on the spot, Andy. Um we haven't made a final decision yet, but the quote I just gave you was from from SIG.
Okay.
Sig Sauer.
Explain your question.
Sig Sauer's, New Hampshire manufacturer. So I was asking if he was gonna go from Glock, which is not a New Hampshire manufacturer, to a New Hampshire manufacturer.
But it's the same kind of.
Probably, well, depending on who you talk to, yes, it's Ford and Chevy. You know, do you like a Ford, do you like a Chevy? They're comparable.
We've done our research and.
But they're both six cylinders.
And they come with the SIG, have their own optics, their own flashlight, so.
I like the Sig's.
Army, Marines, everybody's going to SIG.
SIG.
Ah. Okay.
And they are New Hampshire based.
Which is even better. Interesting.
So as I said before, that was taken out of this, my budget and town manager agreed to allow us purchase this fiscal year. And that's all I had for highlights, but if anyone has any other questions about any line items, feel free.
Barbara?
Do we, do we really need three new patrol cars? I can't get one more year out of them? Cuz I know that question's gonna come up. Every year we do, every year we get battered about.
Every year, yes, the the patrol cars, we, they're, they are very worn um when they come out of patrol. We have passed them down to other divisions, and other divisions kinda cringe sometimes with it because of uh the maintenance that goes into it after those three, three, three years that they come out. The chief could give you a better explanation, but we do go through and we do cycle our police cars every three years, and then we do rotate them throughout the police, fire, and other divisions, so we're not just getting rid of them, they're, they're being repurposed throughout the town as well. Um and like I say, when they, I've been in a couple of them that came off the line with ninety-nine thousand miles on them and they were three years old and I'm they're they're running, but, you know, the air conditioner might not work. Their, you know, catalytic converter, catalytic converter might be smelling a little bit as in the cars and things of that sort, so they are they are pretty worn by the time they get done, and it's usually around a hundred thousand miles in those cars.
So we've actually been running longer, uh because one year that we didn't get any cruisers, we really were backed up because it just caught up with us. We still have vehicles that have a hundred thirty thousand miles that we're using in our criminal division, that have been on the road, because we're still trying to rotate out, we have. We have two more sedans that we need to get rid of and those were thirteens, I think. So, we're, we're very responsible when we try to make sure we look ahead. And typically we're running about a hundred twenty now of the year, cause like I said, they're, they're running fine. We keep up with the maintenance on them. D, DPW does a great job with maintaining them. Um, like I said, but like Town Manager said, sometimes when we give them to the other departments, they're, they're ragged, they're rusting, they're, you know, the, we had a Ford five hundred that I was with that was for fourteen years and, you know, I think the interns drove it and didn't realize that their feet could probably go through the, the floorboards. So, so, I, Barbara, we would definitely need those, three. Thank you.
Nancy?
What's about the annual mileage on a patrol car?
Oh, jeez. So, probably around thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand?
Thank you.
Yeah, officers, officers will run typically about a hundred miles a shift if they're patrolling or if they're not sitting, you know, doing reports and such. And like the deputy said, you know, you're talking, it'd be circumstances where you're at a stoplight now and you need to accelerate to go to a code two call, which is lights, siren call. You know, so you're getting that higher mileage and the, the turning, the, you know, you see our officers, they stop at every intersection when it's a red light. You're now you're braking on the higher speeds and so, they get, they get warned.
But the chief also made a point is that these cars, the engines are running.
Right.
When they're, they're not, they might not be just miles, they might be thirty-three thousand miles on it, but they're running all the time.
And that's something we do when we rotate them out of the patrol division, is that if we're actually gonna retire a vehicle or, or go someplace else, of course, we want to keep it to ourselves if it's a good car, right? Um, we'll actually look at the idle times on the, on the car and it will give you the runtime in the idle times.
You can actually determine that?
Yeah. Yeah, if it's now inside the, typically in the menu.
So, basically you can see how many hours are on the engine?
Uh, sorry, engine hours, yes, that's correct.
Versus actually traveling, which is the miles you have.
Yep.
Interesting.
Kind of like a boat.
Interesting, I didn't know.
And there's a formula, I forget what it is, but then you can convert the engine hours into actual mileage, which would indicate the life of the car.
But, but you were talking about cars that are twelve years old and beyond, putting your feet through the floorboards, right? I mean.
So, well, so.
But that's not your three-year-old patrol car?
No, correct. If you notice in my budget, I asked for administration car.
I did notice, I was gonna ask.
Because we had a Ford five hundred, like I said, that lasted, I think it was fourteen, almost fourteen years. Yeah, Chief Mulligan, fourteen years where we used it years upon years upon years. And finally, we were able to rotate it on our fleet and we gave it to, I believe, DBW for the interns to use. So, sometimes, I, I think at some point it'd be beneficial for us to start buying a couple of admin vehicles so we can have the life of them last longer, rather than rotating out our cars. Like most of our command staff vehicles, eighty-five thousand plus, our detective cars, over a hundred. Because we're trying to get the most life out of them. We're trying to be responsible and just order what we need to order.
Just don't get a truck.
I was waiting for Councilor Rothouse to be here, cause I was gonna say it's not gonna be a pickup truck.
I did it for him.
So, if Councilor Rothouse is. Town Manager, that's the first thing I thought of when Chairman mentioned that he was gonna be texting them, like, when we get to vehicles, it's gonna be about the truck.
Uh, he, he, uh.
Oh, and the motorcycles.
Oh, gosh. Any other questions? Andy?
So, I noticed as we went through every one of these sections, typically in the wages portion, there's somewhat of a drop. And I'm assuming that's because the fifty-third week is not. But in the police section, I didn't see that same drop as I saw in the other section.
Because their two percent wage increase because of their gentlemen. They're, they're forty-one sworn officers and.
Forty-four.
Forty-four sworn officers now.
Well, minus three.
But, but their forty-one sworn officers are all underneath contractual, were underneath contractual obligation of a two percent increase, so. That, that eats that up a little bit. And plus, we are higher, the other thing we gotta look at when you see some of these, these numbers, like, if you look at wages hourly, oh-one-oh-four, eighty-one-oh-four, um, you'll see that's going up eleven thousand seven hundred ninety. That's that two percent increase. But they also have gentlemen and, and ladies that are stepping through the process in their contracts. So, um, we got people who've been here five years, so they go to master and then they step in master. So, that's all included with these numbers. It's just not a flat two percent on some of them. Some of them are still stepping and then some of the newer, newer gentlemen and ladies in the department are stepping in their patrol division for, um, thirty months. So, that's where some of these numbers come in, in the police contract, is they have some steps built into them. So, we take that all into account when we put the budget in.
Okay, thanks.
Now, there are some departments that aren't unionized, like the town clerk assessment. So, you're only gonna see a decrease because of that fifty-third week, you're right.
Yeah, and then, then when that fifty-third week comes back around, it's gonna hurt.
Oh, yeah.
Cause you're gonna see increases all over, but, uh. Yeah, okay. I still think there's gotta be a way to fix that, but I don't, I haven't figured out what it is. And I'm so far from being an accountant, I couldn't even imagine. So, the, it, it, looking in the summary sheet here, there's some strange anomalies going on between eighty-two sixty and eighty-two seventy. Uh, and I don't even see an eighty-two sixty in the breakdoubts anymore, which is listed as telephone. But, um, can, can you explain what's going on, why in the twenty-one, twenty-two voted, it says it was ten thousand dollars in telephone?
Yeah, that's on, uh, finance and accounting. When we brought the budget in, we brought it in underneath the wrong line, cause we have to import it. Really, that ten thousand one should be in that dues line, eighty-two seventy, on the summary.
And you're just carrying that number along this year?
Yeah, for dues.
For dues, even though we haven't spent that much in the past.
The chief can talk about the dues.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna quibble over two K, but.
Yeah.
So, a cou- a couple of years ago as well, um, I believe Leeds Online was in another location where it shouldn't have been. So, that's twenty-three hundred right there.
Yeah.
I think it was down below.
So, I think that we moved that over. And quite honestly, we added, you know, we added the RAD instructor dues and also increased, the part of the dues was increased when deputy chief was made as well.
Just plain RAD again, for the people at home.
Uh, rape, aggression, defense, it's this, uh, basically women's self-defense program we offer. Those have to be, they have to be yearly certified, yearly dues. I think that every place is trying to get yearly dues out of you now, right? So, that's where, that's where the cost is. And of course, they say if you don't pay your dues and then they won't cut, they won't back you in instruction, so that's where. So, we did add some programs, but I think majority of that was that Leeds Online where it was reclassified into there. And it might have not have been in the budget, I'm not sure.
So.
Leeds, I don't think was.
Rape, aggression, defense instructor is for the public, for people that are interested in information on how to defend themselves?
Correct. We, uh, we advertise, we just hosted a class last month and I think we have another class coming up here soon. Um, and those are for the instructors and the aggressors that are trained. Basically, our officers that are trained to get beating up by the people that take the class.
But they, they wear pads and stuff like that?
Yeah, like a giant red man suit.
Yeah.
But it's hot and sweaty and.
Okay, but those are some of the services that you do offer is.
Correct.
Training classes for the public, not necessarily just for police department.
Correct.
And whatnot.
Yeah, we just hosted a firearms training class. We're actually gonna be doing a, a youth firearms class, um, basically geared towards kindergarten, fourth grade where, uh, what to do if you find a firearm someplace. So, well, that, stay tuned for that, it should be coming out soon.
Stay tuned. Okay, cool. Are there any other questions on the police department? Oh, you're gonna have to wave more. Go ahead. I thought you were looking to see if somebody else was raising a hand.
Last one, last one. Um, for travel and meetings, um, there seems to be quite an increase from two thousand twenty, twenty-one to what's projected is like, eh, ten thousand dollars?
Sure, I can speak to that. COVID, so we weren't able to actually use the money to travel.
Okay.
To reimburse mileage, to hotel rooms. So, as I said before, a lot of these training courses aren't being offered around here where we now have to pay for the officer to be lodged and such. But, yeah, that, that year was just odd, you know, I think our training numbers are down as well for cost because of COVID.
Just keep our fingers crossed.
Everything was being canceled or was offered on Zoom at a discounted rate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I'm just looking through and seeing some of the things that are so nicely highlighted. Overtime others was reduced by the Town Manager by ten thousand? Do you want to talk to that? That's eighty-one eleven?
Correct, I asked for an increase of ten thousand dollars, um, just to support, um, the more train that we like to do. Cause we like to, as I said, we like to change our use of force week to a five-day training and I, and also start increasing our defensive tactics training. All those trainings require us to take officers off their shifts and they have to be backfilled with overtime typically to fill them. But it's, it's necessary training that we feel is necessary and needed. Um, I had requested for an extra ten thousand dollars to help offset the extra train that we're gonna, that we want to implement. And the Town Manager removed it. Oh, correct, yes.
We talked about that.
I forgot. Uh, there was also a salary adjustment for the prosecutor, um, just to get him more in par with, it's hard to find attorneys. I'm sure you guys have heard in papers that, um, you know, county attorneys that have any issues, finding attorneys. Uh, we're very happy with the prosecutor right now and we wanted to bring him more in line with the salaries that were around. So, some of that money went towards that. And I apologize, Ms. McCallie. But like I said, the, it is. Correct. We do want to do more training and like I said, I was just kind of concerned that we weren't gonna be able to keep within the line item for overtime.
Okay. So, we're good, um, I think.
Excellent.
To move on? Any other questions? No? Okay, so we'll move to police detail, which is not a number. Oh, it's back behind.
I'm gonna defer to Town Manager, uh, because he wants to project the numbers and he could probably eloquently explain how the fund works.
So, we have set aside about five thousand seven hundred hours for police outside detail. And a police outside detail is paid by vendors. And, uh, those are gentlemen like Consolidated and, and some of the, uh, PSNH, EverSource, um, some of the other companies that might be digging up on DW Highway. We have certain roads in town that we say they need to use a police detail and other roads in town, um, that we say that they can use a flagger and things of that sort. So, and we're charging them and what we do is we take an average cost for our, from our, um, lieutenants all the way down to our patrolmen and then we take an average cost, add in the retirement cost, add in all the costs that are associated with it. We put an administration charge on it because finance does the billing, handles the receipts of the cash and we come up with, with a dollar. Um, and the, the amount this year is four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. It's up about six thousand dollars from last year. And it's for those, uh, those, those police details. It's, it's separate than, uh, the budget, but we do get reimbursed for it. If they don't use it, we don't get the money on the other side. It's what we call a self-supporting fund, so this supports itself. And we offset that with revenue, but because we have to gross appropriate, we have to put this in as an appropriation. And then it comes off as, as a, a revenue on the backside.
And, and this is one of those funny things where you have to estimate the number correctly, right? Because if for some reason we got twice as much in police details.
Right, we'd have to find it someplace else.
We'd have to find it somewhere else in the budget because if it's not appropriated, we can't spend it.
Correct, and that, that's the point. If, if it's not appropriated, we can't spend it unless we find it someplace else in the budget, but we'd still get the revenue.
So, it'd be easy to say, well, gosh, if somebody else is paying for it, why do we even bother to put it in there? And, and, yeah, it would make our budget look like it was half a million less. But we wouldn't be able to spend the money, I mean, that people brought in.
Right, we'd have to.
It's part of, it's part of the requirement for how we can handle, um. Income, yeah, it has to be budgeted in order to spend it.
And one of the biggest, you know, police details that we used to do was Rib Fest.
It's back.
It's back, that's right, it's back.
With more events too.
Yeah, and, and Isabush now is doing a lot more events that, of their own, that, that police have to, you know, they get higher police detail for those kind of events and for traffic and things of that sort over there. So, that's why we have to, we're budgeting the fifty-seven hundred hours.
Those are done at overtime pay or?
Yep, they're, they're done, everything's done at overtime, an overtime rate for, for the police officer. They're done on overtime, they're not done during the shift. It's additional duties that the police officers are working on outside of their normal shift.
Because we can't take them off shift to do something like a detail. I mean, we still need the people that are scheduled and, and whatnot. And we're not gonna go hire somebody just to be able to cover details, cause we don't know how much, when, where, or how.
Correct. Correct, and, and that's it, you know, we're, we're not taking patrol officers off of patrol to, to handle a traffic event at Isabush that we know about. We're talking to them, the, the event organizers understand what's going on. Uh, they wanted to do a bacon and beer, he's fully aware, he gets involved with, uh, with the police chief and, and a captain and they go over what they're looking for, for, for details and things of that sort. And they work it and it's all outside of the normal shift, so we still have patrol coverage throughout the town. That's why it has to be done on overtime.
Right, I guess the point I was trying to make is when you see these details out there, you don't have to worry about the fact that the patrols are not there.
Correct.
They are in fact there, these guys are working overtime, uh, in addition to their regular shifts to be able to spend that time out there.
Correct.
All right. Okay. Are there any other questions on police detail?
No, but I just want to make a note, I just got a, a text from Finley with the truck picture. So, he knows. He knows they're taking care of him.
There you go.
Actually, Chief, um, if we may, uh, Chairman, I sent you a text, but I'll ask you the question. There was a question that came up when we were switching over from, uh, from, um, communications to, uh, to police from, from Councilor Rothouse. The overtime, I mean, the, the education, we talked about sending these dispatchers education. Is there overtime costs associated with that?
Say the question again?
So, we're, the question was, we talked about the education and about sending dispatchers for this new certification that they, not new certification, but the certification in classes. Uh, Councilor Roth asked, Roth House asked the question, is there overtime associated with sending these gentlemen and ladies to this class?
There, there will be some overtime associated with it and hopefully we can maintain that in our present budget if we're full staff.
So, it's accounted for in the budget already?
Correct. If, we would try to make it arrange where they go to training where there's a day shift supervisor on during those hours, so we're not staffing it up. There might be a few shifts where we have to do overtime, but we try, we, we think we can manage that.
Okay. All right. So, we're good? Any other questions? Before we let these gentlemen go? They've had a long day.
They were gonna do assessing too.
They're gonna do assessing?
They don't have to say fair or unfair.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief.
That's his job.
It's interesting that the pistols come with that red dot.
The laser dots, yeah.
Duck Hunter, remember the Duck Hunter game?
It's amazing how technology is changing, I feel too.
Now, we're going to assessing?
O two?
O two. The, uh, assessing budget is up, I think, uh, around twenty-six hundred dollars from the previous year. We had a, uh, longtime individual come back during the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. She's, she left for a while, then she came back. The person that replaced her was making a little bit less money than her when she came back. She was, she's great with the, uh, with, with the seniors and, and the exemptions and things of that sort. So, we brought her back in at what she left at, her rate of pay when she left, which is a little bit more. That's why you'll see a little bit of increase in eighty-one oh four there. But, uh, Tom is here to discuss everything. The other thing is the capital reserve fund for the revaluation. We were budgeting fifteen thousand dollars a year, around six seventy-five thousand dollars to do a revale. Now revales are running about a hundred, a hundred and five thousand dollars to do, to a revale every five years. So we're steadily increasing the amount of money that we put aside into that capital reserve fund to do those revaluations. Take it away, Tom.
Uh, there's not much left for me to talk about. This is a, a, a three-person department, uh, non-unionized. Actually, the, the total budget has only increased $200 from, uh, from the 21, 22 to the current 22, 23. And really the, uh, uh, the reason for that increase is the, the adjustment in wages because of the, the turnover in that, uh, assessing coordinator position. Uh, there were a couple other line items where we, we might've added a, you know, a few hundred dollars to, just to, to kinda bring it up to be more realistic with what the actual spend has been over the last, uh, few years. But other than that, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions.
So, um, the, the revale cost, I, I don't even remember where they were in here, but it, as I looked back, it didn't look like we were spending 75 or a hundred thousand dollars for a revale. What, help me understand the numbers there? I mean, five times 15 is 75, right?
Correct. Yeah. This last revale we did was a hundred and $2,000 and we broke it out over two, a two-year period. So we broke it out, out of the 2021 budget, which was the 40,295 that you see in the 8910 area. And then 21, 22.
In the where? I'm sorry.
Eighty-nine-ten on the very last, before the totals. Eighty-nine-ten, forty-two ninety-five. So we, we spent $40,000 of that hundred and $6,000, uh, hundred and $2,000 uh, revaluation. And then in 21, 22, we're spending the rest of it. But since we're using the voted and not actual, it's not there as an expense. Uh, but that's where the remaining, remainder of it is to come up with around a hundred thousand dollars worth for that revaluation that we're in, right? Well, we just completed, I should say.
Okay. I guess.
I mean, I get what you're saying. But I think if the next, if we're only putting away 17, five a year and in five years, we're looking at another hundred and some thousand.
We have some money, we have some money left over. I'm incrementally increasing that to where we need to be at $20,000. I'm doing 25 this year, 2,500 this year, and then 25 next year to be at 20. We have some money left over from what's, what's in the balance of that capital reserve fund. So that's why we're, we're going up. I'm slowly increasing it to where we need to be.
Okay. Thank you.
I know $5,000 isn't a lot or $2,500 isn't a lot. But when we, like I said, when we're looking at the budget and looking at where we want it to be, this is one of those areas that we could pare back a little bit because we do have some years before we're planning on doing the next one, I hope.
Did, did that hundred and six, was it more or less expensive because of our current situations with COVID and stuff or?
It was, uh.
It seems like a lot of money considering they didn't do a lot of in-house checks and all that kinda stuff.
But there's still a lot. They still drove around the entire town. They looked, they had the cards. There was a lot of things. Um, we had turnover in one of the positions in the department. And one of those positions used to help out a lot more during the revaluation, was able to do a little bit more. We're still trying to get that person trained. So hopefully the next time that this comes up, they, they were useful, but they could be more useful. We had an individual from, um, another community, actually all the new construction we had to pay for. Usually that, we would do that in-house and just have the, it listed and then they would verify that that was right. This time we had to pay for our, the, the person doing the revale to do all the new construction uh, because of, of turnover that we've had in that department. Um, it, it, that's where the trend is going, price per parcel. We have 11,000 parcels in town. Um, so we were paying, you know, like a hundred and $6,000, like I said. But that's where the trend is going to be in that hundred thousand dollar range because all you can see with all the additional building that we have, it's, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost us in that range again to revalue. Especially there's a lot more research that needs to be done. Yeah, we have a, an apartment complex, say Gilbert Crossing and the one that's going in Harris Pond. But are they similar? Aren't they similar? You know, Executive Park Drive. You gotta, there's some research that they have to do in surrounding areas to see, to value those. And if they don't sell, and that's the big thing, on a revaluation for, for an individual home or resident, it's a lot easier to do a revaluation because there's a lot of sales data on it. But like a shopping mall or, uh, or, um, apartment complex or, or things of that sort. Condos are separate. Condos individually sell so that we can value those. But for apartment complexes, they don't sell for, for, uh, you know, a, a shopping mall, say like the commons. That doesn't, there aren't a lot of them that, that sell and there's not a lot of sales data there.
They don't even use sales data for those. They use their income value.
Some of them they use income value, but some of them they use, if for instance, one of the, I believe, one of the, um, one of the apartment complexes just sold, and I don't even know what it sold for. But, uh, it's, they had it on the books for, you know, X amount of millions and it just sold for Y amount of millions. And that was one of the things when we were getting ready to do the MS one, that was, when, when we had to redo the MS one, that was why because we had sales data that said this is the fair market value of your new apartments. So things of that sort. But if you don't have that, it's kinda hard to value those kinda things. And it takes a little bit more research and knowledge to do.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Okay. Alright, well, that explains that question then. Whatever. Anybody else have questions? No. That takes care of assessing. Which brings us to our favorite general government, O one.
Yes. O one.
And Tom's leaving? So I thought finance was gonna back up general government for crying out loud.
You know, I used to do it. I don't understand, you know.
I mean, you used to do it all the time when you were finance.
That's right. That's right. So I'll give him a pass this year because it's his first budget. So there, there are some differences as you'll see. There's some, uh, salary, uh, adjustments. Um, 8101, it's, it's the 53rd week of, of savings. But then because of all the shifting and hiring, um, with the ex-town manager leaving, me being promoted to town manager, finance director being promoted, assistant deputy finance director purchasing, there's been some, a lot of salary changes within there. And the salary savings is about $33,000 when all said and done with all the positions rotating through. And, and things that go along with, uh, that's just in salary savings out of that $43,000 that you see in 0101, 8103. The comp absences are down about eight, 0101, 8142. Compensated absences are down about $21,000. That's because the people who are turning eligible to retire in this fiscal year that we're talking about have about $20,000 of, of less in, in accrued sick time and vacation time. So that's where we get the savings there. And that, as we have talked several years, that's a, a accounting, um, transaction that needs to be made that basically says that we have to account for everybody who's eligible to retire, when they're eligible to retire, and put that in a separate balance sheet account. That's what this account is for. Um, so it's, it's a $21,000 decrease there. Legal costs are going up about $30,000. That's a twofold. With, uh, with, uh, labor contracts, two labor contracts coming up next year and needing, uh, some language changes. Um, and for them to review some of the language changes there, but there's also been a price increase in, uh, hourly rate for our attorneys. So that's, uh.
How dare them?
Yeah, right. Uh, that's the $30,000 increase there. Um, 01, 01, 8353, computer finance software is going about, up about 21. Uh, the, the line's going about $21,000 and that's because it's more accurate effect what the finance software is costing. Finance software was put in, in 2008, 2009. So it's getting a little bit long in the tooth. It's still operational. There are, uh, both Tom and, uh, the IT, um, John Diaz has been looking at potentially going to more of a, uh, cloud-based accounting software through the current vendor. So they've been looking at that too. But, uh, what we see with that is there's a subscription base and there's not really a savings between what we're paying for in, in annual maintenance costs versus, um, the subscription cost for going to the cloud-based software. 01, 01, 8359 is, is increasing, um, around $9,000. Uh, that's twofold. Bank charges are going up and then, um, ambulance billing. What, we use a third-party biller and they get a percentage. And since our ambulance, uh, our ambulance calls are increasing versus, and the rates going up. So they get a little bit more and that's more accurate effect the actual cost we're spending on ambulance billing. Um, elections, 0101, 8410. We're going from one election to three election and we're estimating that's gonna be an increased cost of about $18,500, $600. And then advertising, um, is decreasing about $5,000. And the reason why I brought that up is because, HR now is using a new advertising software that's built in off of our website. So that, uh, when we post a job, it will be, it goes out to all the sites that we were, indeed, and, and all the other job sites out there. It'll go and be hit with, hit on their sites and people can actually search when they do a job search and it will come up that way. We don't have to pay for those services anymore because of the way our new software will, will be working. Our new, uh, HR software will be working through the website. And it'll be a lot, it's a lot easier. It's, it's very cumbersome when we go out for a job. We put in the paper, we get job, they, they have to fill out their application, they have to send us a resume, a cover letter. Then we have to copy them all, send those off to departments, department then call and say, this is who we wanna interview. This new software is pretty slick to the point where they will be able to just come in through the website, do our, submit a resume, submit a cover letter, do our application. And then when we're ready, when we're ready to close the job, we can send that off to the hiring manager or the department head. Department head can say, I wanted, and click a box, yes, interview this one, yes, interview this one, this one. That comes back in an email to, to HR saying, alright, these are people I want to interview. They set up the interview and every, it's tracked that way through, through the applicant tracking or our new HR software. So it's, it's a pretty slick function. It, it will help us in the long run when, when we're going out to do things. Uh, that's all that I had for, um, increases and decreases, uh, to talk about. I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions people may have.
Andy?
Line 8142. Yep. So we have that at 155,000, I, which is down from what was voted last year. But if you look at actuals, was 196,000.
Right. That is because when people retire. They, in that year, we might've had more people becoming eligible to become retire in the two groups. We have a group one, which used to be, uh, age 60, um, age 60 years old, which is everybody but police and fire. And then police and fire group two was age 45 in 20 years. That has changed now. Group two has changed to age, 25 years of service, age 50. So why we're looking at 196 compared to 176 compared to 155? That is what we're projecting of those people who are on the, on the roles right now are full-time employees, when they're gonna be aging to become retiring.
And then the, the same scenario on 8359, other outside services. Again, our actuals were 144,000, but we're only budgeting 118,000.
I'll have to go back. I, my computer died. I'll have to go back and look at what those actual costs were. Um, that, that line is.
The years before that, it was only 104, 107, 113.
And I don't know what the spike was that year.
So there was probably something special with 21.
I'll find, I'll have to find out what the spike was in that year.
And, and the only reason I ask that is, you know, are we comfortable going in with what we have budgeted considering our previous year's actuals were so much higher? And if there's a reason, great. I'm, I'm glad it came down. I just, you know, I wanna have confidence in the number that we're going in with as well.
Yeah, no, and I, I understand fully, you know, the budget we're presenting right now, we feel is, is gonna be actually going forward. But I, I don't know what, I, like I said, my laptop just died, so.
Got it.
Forgot to bring the charger. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Kinda laptop do you have?
I got a Dell.
Oh. I've got an HP power cord. I don't know that I would try it.
I don't think it'll work.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Barbara?
I actually have several, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, on.
You can have three. Oh, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so, uh, 8303 and in 8300. Human Resources, I think she's a director now.
There is no 8300.
Yep. Nope. Yep, I gotcha.
Got me?
Gotcha. 80, 8103, director.
And then it comes up again in travel and meetings.
Yep.
And she's, you know.
She's a director now, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want her to.
Nope. Gotcha there.
Yeah.
No.
And, and that wasn't just everything. So for employee incentives, 8143. There is quite the increase.
Uh, yep, that's, uh, if you look at 8143, what we do there is, um, incentives of $5,000. And then the last couple of years, we've been looking at wage adjustments, um, to, for, for positions and things of that sort.
So that's what the wage adjustments part is, is it's coming in under incentives?
Yeah.
Instead of wages?
It's a place where we can budget for.
It's for incentive wage increases, not, not just.
Wages, wages.
Well.
So down in 8260.
Yep.
Who's got a pager?
Actually, we, we, we have pagers in our wastewater treatment plant.
Don't they have cell phones?
Some gentlemen, they're with the technology that we're changing over with the new system. We are doing away with the pager, but right now we have to keep the pager with some of the old technology cause the pager works and the cellphone doesn't. And some of these gentlemen who are on call don't have cellphone service in the town of Merrimack.
There are dead spots.
Well, there's a dead spot if you call me at my house sometimes.
Yep. Mine is one end of the house or the other.
Yep, exactly.
One end does, one end doesn't.
I can sit in a chair and be talking and move two, a little bit and nobody can hear me.
Okay. And keep going along, subscriptions. You have a Zoom subscription now? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. 8271. I thought you could just, you know.
Yeah, that was a good question.
The subscription for Zoom, I mean, I, I can see why, I would be wondering why we didn't buy it two years ago and maybe a little bit last year, but. Really?
Yeah, we have 10 accounts.
Yeah, but how come it wasn't listed in the years before? Where, how did you pay for it last year?
We paid for it on a budget because we brought Zoom in, in March of 2020. And it was after the 21, 22 budget was already approved. So we paid for it on a budget. This year we're just accounting for it.
But we're all meeting in person, so what are we zooming?
There's still some meetings that are happening on Zoom.
Okay. And it's cheaper and they last longer than 45 minutes so that you need a subscription?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow. Cause I don't wanna drive here if it's two to, two to six inches of snow.
No, but we, we, we have Zoom meetings with, uh, our attorneys.
Uh, that's true.
We have Zoom meetings with a lot of different people that last more than an hour.
Just thought I'd make sure.
Save a lot in travel costs when we can Zoom with the attorneys.
That is true. Legal other, getting back to that one, cause you noted that there was an increase in the budget amount, although we popped it off at 286 plus last year because we were doing a lot with legal. Uh, we don't anticipate that same level of involvement this year?
In 2022, 23, I'm hoping that, uh, a lot of our legal matters will be resolved um, as they relate to the companies that we are dealing with.
Okay. Thought I'd ask. Okay, thought I'd ask.
Yes.
At least.
Three.
Me, ooh, three?
There's three, there's three that we spend. Yes.
We can all cross our fingers, yep.
Yeah, okay.
So law, uh, eighty-three hundred, travel and meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Went, it's like a thousand dollars more?
Once again, that is because of, uh, of COVID.
Okay.
And the old-
You're gonna have to expand that a little bit.
Yeah, really.
With COVID, people are not going to meetings.
No, but in twenty-twenty-one, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
For actuals.
I'm budgeting seventeen, sev- one thousand, seven hundred and fifty, which is a thousand dollars more. Is, we're hoping that we can get back on this stuff.
So, so while you're, while you're looking at that, can you explain to me that there's three columns before the actual that talk about twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three? And they all have seventeen fifty for a number yet. Was, was that what we had written into the budget for twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
Seventeen fifty and we spent seven fifty-nine?
And I don't think we spent it all, but-
So we didn't spend a thousand on, because of COVID and travel and, and all that kinda stuff?
Correct. The, uh, the, the GFOA conference was canceled, but all, both of them?
GFOA is-
Yeah, Government Finance Officers Conference. And that's usually, you know, um, one that we go away to, um, or travel down to Wilburn, Mass. And those were both canceled, so.
Okay.
So actually, what you're saying is seventeen fifty has already been, always been allocated, but we only use seven fifty-nine because of COVID.
Correct.
That's what you mean?
Yes, that's what I mean.
So eighty-three, thirty-four, which is maintenance office equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in previous years, forty-nine, eighty-three was budgeted, but now we're up to eleven, what boosted it?
Um, the time clock system.
Time clock, yeah, there's a question too. What, how come the time clocks costing sixty-five hundred a year? Or is that?
It, it was, in the previous years too, we just, they were out of budget, we were paying that out of budget. Um, this is, uh, to more accurately affect the cost of it. That's also a maintenance subscription fee for the time clock system that we are using with DPW, general gu- um, any other nine-union positions.
And do we see an offsetting savings because of spending that money for a time clock?
We do, it's, it's, uh, it's a lot, uh, easier for payroll now to process payroll in those divisions, because it's all of computerized and they talk to our finance system. So we, we do see an offset in time spent processing and looking at pay, and, and mistakes. To be honest with you, it was mistakes, cause the way we used to do payroll is the departments would send over an Excel spreadsheet. Then the payroll person would have to input the Excel spreadsheet, then verify the input of the Excel spreadsheet and then process payroll. Now, all they have to do is look at the time clock, pull that into our finance software and verify that what was in the time clock system was pulled over into the, the finance software and then move the next step forward in the payroll process. So there is a little bit of a time savings in payroll, um.
What departments are on time clock?
Um, what departments are on time clock? Uh, everybody, community development, DPW, DPW admin, solid waste, wastewater, highway, parks and rec, general government, assessing, town clerk, tax collector.
So all of town.
So who's not? Library?
Library's on it too.
Oh, okay.
The only ones that are not on it are police and fire and, police and fire. Those are the only two departments that are not on the time clock. Everybody else is on the time clock.
Is there a reason they're not on it?
I tried to get them on it last year and there was some pushback, so we're not bringing it forward this year, because of, uh, the way their schedules work.
Twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hour, um, the, so, it wasn't-
To be determined.
Yes. Moving forward, we might be on it, but right now, I didn't wanna bring it forward and there's a cost to bring them on too. Um, because we'd have to buy additional time clocks, things of that sort and change. Right now, it was, for those two departments, it's easier if we can get a paper copy and input it ourselves or what we have to do.
Okay, they have some kind of a system though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Last one.
Okay.
Eighty-four, sixty. Five thousand for last rest.
Yep.
Cemetery?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the flag?
Nope.
Uh, what is it?
Last Rest Cemetery, i- i- right now, Last Rest, what we do with Last Rest Cemetery is because, uh, the town is supposed to have a cemetery. So what we've been doing is, is, uh, instead of looking at building land and, and building out a, a cemetery that the town has run, we've been giving Last Rest the five thousand dollars so that they can do their expansion projects, their expansion projects. And they've really, there's still a cemetery in town that people can get buried at. We are looking at, we have a station right by the South Station. We've been going back and forth and, and trying to figure out if there's room to expand there. There's been a lot of talk whether or not we can expand there or not expand there because of the wetlands. Um, and other things that happen at that cemetery. So right now, we do still have graves available at that's, at what they call Reed Cemetery by South Fire Station. But we've been giving Last Rest the five thousand dollar stipend for their expansion. And they just did an expansion of, of two areas for about, uh, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. So it's to help them with their expansion.
But I guess I'm not understanding, what does that buy the town? So is it an RSA or reg that states that every town must have a cemetery?
Yes, it's an RSA saying every town must have a cemetery.
That's what I'm getting at.
So it's saving us money so that we're not buying land.
Buying land and creating one.
Creating a cemetery.
Okay.
So, where's the three hundred dollars for the Heritage Commission?
It's in oh, one, oh, one, eight, five, one, zero.
You knew that was coming.
Mm-hmm.
Heritage Fund.
It's Heritage Fund and it's three hundred dollars. Three hundred dollars.
Okay.
And-
Bottom of page twenty-two.
Yeah, where are you?
So it's almost at the very end of the budget.
I remember seeing and thinking the Historical Society and all of that was in there.
Yes, that's there as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Computer Services, you talked about, I think.
Yes.
Um, but I had gotten distracted, could you-
What number, Tom?
Uh, eighty-three, fifty-three.
Thank you.
Um, Tom can speak more to that, but it's the Finance Department Maintenance and Support Cost for the computer system, for our revenue system and our actual accounting system. It's about sixty-four thousand dollars for that.
And Virtual Town Hall is going up four thousand?
Yeah, virtual-
Forty-four hundred?
Yeah, Virtual Town Hall, that's our website. For the town of Merrimack, we have to pay, once again, a subscription to have our town website, but they host it. If it goes down, if, if the server goes down, if they need more room on the servers, it's all on them.
Okay, but it's going up forty-five hundred dollars, which is two hundred percent.
Yeah, um, as well. That, some of the savings of five thousand dollars is based on that too, because we're going with the HR software that I talked about.
Oh, that comes as part of that Virtual Town Hall package?
Town Hall package now.
Okay, so the, the, the twenty thousand dollar increase in, in the Finance Department Maintenance and Support is for new software?
No, that's-
Ongoing support or?
That's ongoing support.
Just ongoing support?
Yeah, just ongoing.
Fifty percent increase?
It has been increasing over the last few years and we, we had not reflected that in the budget. This is a kind of a cumulative catch-up that, that takes into account a few years' worth of increases in that, uh, that line item.
Okay. Um, and I asked you about that. Litigation, we already talked about. The, um, we talked about that. The elections.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-twenty-one, we spent fifty-seven thousand and this year we have thirty-eight thousand for that. You said that's for three elections?
Yes, that's for three elections, yep.
Twelve thousand apiece or something like that, thirteen, twelve, five.
Yeah.
Um, is that gonna cover our cost, given, uh, our expectations is, whether it's COVID or not or? I mean, I, I know that there were some things that were more expensive. The, the ballots and memory packing is, is a straight factor, right?
Right, right, and the, uh, and the, uh, meals. And, uh, the meals are, are going up because, you know, it's three and three out of one, um, so, and then the rental.
The rental is going up?
Yeah, from one to three, um, polling place rental.
Okay, but that's just a straight three X.
Yeah, it's just a straight three X.
All right.
To answer your question, we're hoping that by September, when we have the first election, in this budget, things are kinda back to normal. We're hoping. Um, Diane has built into her budget, like she said, some extra hours?
Well, we have an election in April, that's in this budget.
That's in this budget.
So next year's budget is-
Starts in September.
September.
Would be the first one.
And then November and then April.
Then November and April, so hopefully by the fall. I know we've been saying that for two years now.
Well, it got better in the summer, this past summer.
Yeah, it did, it got better.
But, but-
We might be in endemic stages rather than a pandemic.
That, if you listen to some of the experts with this, with a couple of strands, they're not as strong, which is the endemic.
Don't get me started.
So, um, but we're, we're hoping that, you know, that would be enough to cover the three elections.
Okay. Any other questions for General Government? Any other questions for the budget review? The revenue?
Yes.
Do we? We do have revenue.
Yeah.
I always love the revenue.
So, um, with the revenue, if you look at, uh, interest, oh, one, zero, one, seven, eight, oh, one, interest pooled cash.
I'm sorry.
Uh, page one sixty-seven.
One sixty-seven?
One sixty-seven.
Yep.
Uh, interest pooled cash, it's, I don't know, probably like maybe a quarter way down the page.
Yeah.
We'll go, oh, one, zero, one, seven, eight, zero, one, zero. It's going from two hundred and thirteen to one twenty-five. Um, we're trying to, we've been trying to bring down the interest revenue slowly. Um, at one point, we were up at six hundred thousand dollars. Now we're trying to get this more closely to where we're reflecting the revenue. Um, what I heard from the feds is that they're looking to do three increases in two thousand twenty-two. So, if they, if they do actually do the three increases, we should be able to hit the, the one, the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we have budgeted for there. But it is a decrease of eighty-nine thousand dollars. Um, the next one is, is surplus, as you'll see, is going down three hundred thousand dollars. That was the three hundred thousand dollars that was set into, to use for, uh, the fifty-third week. And that one, excuse me, is one, zero, one, seven, nine, two, one, zero. Um, it's right before that thick black line. It's going from one million, six fifty to one million, three fifty. So that three hundred thousand dollar difference is the, um, is what we have for, uh, the fifty-third week payroll. That's why that's decreasing.
I'm sorry, that was where?
One, zero, one, seven, nine, two, one, zero. It's right before that thick black line, the first-
That's all one-twos.
Yeah, if you go to one sixty-seven, right there is the thick black line.
Okay.
Yeah, that's going down three hundred thousand dollars.
I was on the wrong page.
Um.
One, zero, one, seven, nine, two, one, the surplus?
Yeah, surplus. So that's really where the fund balance, that we use fund balance, so we're using about one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance. It's down about three hundred thousand dollars and the difference once again is the fifty-third week of payroll. Uh, four lines down from there, you'll see one, zero, three, seven, two, two, nine, zero. Federal and state grants, fire, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, that is the Safer Grant. That's one year of the Safer Grant.
Which is, which is- Eight, eight firefighters. Okay.
For eight firefighters. Um, then if you flip the page and you look at page one sixty-nine, one, two, four, seven, one, zero, two, zero. Current use.
Yep.
That's going down fifty thousand dollars. Um, a lot of the projects have, I figure will be out of current use in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, with the homes that are being built. And right now, there are no other projects that I know of that will be taking land out of current use. So that's why we're decreasing it to the hundred thousand dollars to make up what we have in, in projects that we know of. And then lastly, if you go down a little bit more, um, road improvements, sorry, my mistake, we gotta go up the page. Page one sixty-eight, I'm sorry for jumping. Road improvements, four, two, four, two, seven, six, two, five, zero. Road improvements, I'm increasing it to a hundred and thirty-five thousand from a hundred and twenty-five thousand, ten thousand dollars. That's more accurately to reflect the increase in population from, uh, that we're getting for the, um, that extra five dollars per registration for road improvements.
So that's an income based on the five thousand, the five dollars?
Yes.
Auto registrations?
Auto registrations.
Those registrations that Diane was upset about, at least, at least we're seeing something there.
Yeah, we're getting an extra ten thousand dollars and I increased that there. Um, that's really all that I have. There's some other ebbs and flows throughout the, um, the, the, the total revenues.
So your auto registrations, you dropped by almost four hundred thousand?
Yeah, um, I, that's, that's one of those numbers that, you know, right now, we're, we're, we're trending to the five point six million dollars still. Um, next year, we could trend higher if, if the chip market comes back and, and everybody's buying cars again. But one of the other things that you gotta remember is if the feds increase the rate two or three times during this, this year, twenty-two, people aren't gonna be more apt to buy cars because now they gotta pay more in interest. So they, they might not be buying that brand-new car and they might be living with the, the car that they've been in for three years or so. So, right now, eighteen months from now, we can come back in September and adjust that number if we think that we're gonna start seeing a lot more in, in purchasing of vehicles. But right now, we feel the five point six million dollars is a good number, to flatline it.
So you're saying that this year, we're, we're still looking to reach the five point six that we budgeted last year?
Yeah, we're, we're tre- we're trending towards that number right now.
And you're just keeping the number the same?
For the following year, yes.
Okay, I was reading the columns wrong, I thought one was the, the request and the other was the budget. But this, this is from one year to the next.
From one year to the next, yes.
Okay, so you're just keeping it flat this year?
Flatlining it.
Okay. And unfortunately, the, uh, state revenue sharing, you've already included, even though our senator was telling us that it went up by four hundred thousand or something like that.
And it, it did go up four hundred thousand dollars.
But you've already included it.
But we got that notification back in October, that, that was our number. So we already inclu- we already had that number from DRA. So we, we took a bit, full advantage of that in this tax rate and next year. So, w- we're hoping that that might be a little bit more next year, but, you know, we know that that's, that's what we're looking at right now, one, nine.
Okay. And you were talking about ambulance fees going up, but you're not increasing the number here at all?
Yeah, the ni- up, right now, it's about, we did eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one. I think the nine hundred thousand i- is a good price. I haven't got the new Medicare rates, I haven't seen the new Medicare rates for twenty-two yet. Um, and I don't know how much they're, they're going up. Um, this is one of those items we can- This is one of those items we can adjust later on as we get closer to the September timeframe when we have to put in our revenues for the tax rate.
Okay, but earlier in the budget, you were talking about fees to the ambulance billing going up because of increased fees, but you're not increasing this number at all?
Revenue number right now, because, right now. I'm trying to be as conservative as possible on.
Well, I know, but when we get too conservative in revenues, we end up, we end up telling the taxpayers we have to take it up, pick it up in tax.
Right, but in, in September, we'll definitely take a nice, long look at that number and see where we're at.
Yeah, yes, and we can't know nine months in advance what's going to happen. But when we go to do the budget and get the town to vote on it, we don't have these kind of numbers. And yet, we can make adjustments in September for what finally happens. But we still have to convince them that they have to pass the budget based on the expenses that we expect and the tax rate that we expect and all that kind of stuff. Barbara?
Just two questions. Paul, for the current use tax.
Yes.
I believe I saw that Fund Fifty-three for the conservation?
Yes.
Is capped. What happens to the money?
It all comes to the general fund.
Does it pop into the general fund?
It all comes into the general fund.
Okay.
The voters, no, the voters, I do not have the year off the top of my head. But the voters voted that to cap, it was actually, when did the Alamoal come in? It was right around when the Alamoal was coming in, the year before, the year, around that time. The voters voted to cap current use at a million dollars in Fund Fifty-three. And then any excess would go into general fund. If current use, Fund Fifty-three falls below a million dollars, it's a fifty-fifty split in current use. Fifty percent goes to general fund, fifty percent goes to Fund Fifty-three until they get to that million-dollar figure. And that's how we've been operating for several years. I believe before that, it was.
Everything.
Everything was going in, and then before that, it was also done, it's been voted on two or three different ways.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, so my other question is, what the heck is a timber tax?
Timber tax is if you cut more than an acre of land or so many trees linear foot, you get charged by the state of New Hampshire a timber tax. And the timber, then we get a portion of that timber tax. That's what a timber tax is. So if somebody's going to go do, have ten acres worth of land and they want to cut, selective cut and take out ten acres worth of trees, so many linear feet, they have to pay.
That's kind of interesting, since the first battle of the revolution was the pine tree revolt because of the timber tax, going back to King Edward, and that's what Abel Ebenezer is named for.
Went to King Edward, it didn't go to the people.
No, but it's still.
This is going to the people at least.
Still, we're taxing people because they're cutting their trees. It's a state law.
Yes, I'm trying to find out how much, I'm trying to find it real quick.
You're going to sign off on one of those in the sign file, by the way.
I figured. I remember seeing it last year, and I was looking at that.
Yeah, but that, that's what it is.
Frequently in the sign file, timber tax things to.
Our, our loggers in town, or the loggers understand, and they'll do an intent to cut with so many linear board feet, and then it's taxed on the linear board feet.
And it breaks out by the type of the tree, and, I mean, it's very detailed.
I bet.
Yes.
So much oak, and so much hemlock, and so much whatever. Andy?
Just, just one question, tax overlay.
Yes.
For a debit of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Correct.
Out of revenue. Can you explain that to me?
No, he can't.
Am I opening a can of worms here?
That's a great question.
But it's very.
It's a great question, especially for people that haven't been through it before.
So, so tax overlay is, is an account where that if somebody comes in and says, we say their property is valued at five hundred thousand dollars, and they can prove that their property really should only have been valued at four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Finley just texted me, I'm sorry, something like, but if it's at four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the difference, if an abatement is created, is fifty thousand dollars times seventeen, seventeen, so fifty times seventeen, seventeen, that's where the overlay comes in as a negative. It's to help with those abatement requests that come in so that you are budgeting for a reduction in your property tax revenue. And that's really what the overlay is, it's for abatements, it's for, for things like that.
So it's an accounting mechanism?
Yes, it's an accounting mechanism, it's account, I, I, see, I couldn't really got into the accounting terms where I talked about it's a counter-revenue account, you know.
That was very well done.
But it was better than most times, but it's one of those funny things like the compensated absences. You know, where you have to, you have to put aside some money based on the potential that somebody's going to retire, but they don't necessarily, and so the overlay account is the potential that somebody's going to come in to get a rebate or an abatement. And you'll have to pay it, you know, you won't get that income, or you'll have to refund them or something like that, so it's.
I'll be in next week. Denied. No, but honestly, it's one of those accounts, not to belabor it, but it's one of those accounts that DRA hammers us on when we go to set the tax rate. What's your overlay? What is the voted-on overlay? What we, what was, what's, yeah, because they know that in some communities, they don't have overlay, and then they, they get in trouble. Because, you know, it's just something to look at to, if people come in abatements, and it's residential and commercial. So it could be for the home.
Okay. Are there any other questions for general government? Or revenue, I'm sorry, revenue.
Revenues.
We already passed general government.
Yeah.
Any other questions on revenue? Are there any other comments or questions anybody wants to bring up at this point before we close out this meeting? Nancy?
Thank you. Does it have to be budget-related?
Well, yeah, it should be. I mean, we can, we can go off-topic if you have something you want to talk about, we can't do anything official except budget-related at this point.
Can't vote on anything.
Yeah, I would, actually, I think I'd like to raise something that, a concern that I have, that I am understanding that, I mean, I still think, given the state we're in in terms of public health in the state right now, I think this is something that I'd like to talk about, understanding, of course, that we can't vote on anything. But I, I'm doing a little research just in, you know, Department of Health and Human Services and CDC and that kind of stuff, and wrote some notes, and I think this COVID pandemic is wearing us all out. It's been a really long time, I think people are certainly fatigued. But we're at a place right now where, as a matter of fact, today I was on the DHHS website between three-thirty and a four-thirty, and right before my eyes, the, they updated the system. And we went from a nineteen percent transmission rate, the prior seven days, and at four-thirty today, it changed to a fifty-five percent transmission rate, which is huge. I've had, I think I mentioned before, at one of our meetings, we had the Department of Public Health Director there. It was December eighteenth, I think it was our PFAS Commission meeting, and she explained that hospitals are crumbling. I have a friend, actually, a personal friend who happens to be the president and CEO of CMC, and I was over his house a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, he told me, it's a mess, it is a mess. We are, they're trying, our health providers are doing their very best, they are, you know, under some really challenging circumstances. You know, I think that it, given, I went to, actually, to our town charter, too, to look at what, you know, and I'm still learning, what our goals are, what's our mission and that kind of stuff. And one of the things that it said in section seven-seven, it says, one of our charges is this for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of persons and property. And certainly as a, you know, retired nurse, public health advocate, I take that seriously. And I think we're at a place where, as a group, we really need to look at, do we need to start doing something different given where we're at in a pandemic? One of the things that I think would be really helpful is, I noticed on our website, we don't, we don't have any, there's no reference at all to COVID. Now, some towns don't have that, but others do, and I think that would be a really great thing for us to have, even if just links to CDC, links to DHHS, that interactive website. And, I mean, I know Nashua has it, Litchfield has it, I made some, you know, I was looking myself to see, you know, Bedford doesn't, but, you know, I don't think, I think we can do our own thing. And I, I mean, I know for our town, I see on social media, people asking about schools and, you know, what's, what's, because the CDC has changed guidelines. I think it's confusing for people, and I think just to have one place where we don't have to answer questions directly, but just a go-to place that is constantly updated by the CDC, DHHS. You know, the, the, the recommendations and guidelines have changed, and I think it's important for people to have access to that in one place. And I, I don't know, you know, one of the things we had talked about at the State House last term was our public, our health officers for the towns having a different, taking a different role, and I know, you know, whatever their role is now is what it is, but I noticed our health officer is on the, let me see what the official title is. The, yeah, but, but she sits on the, wait a second, the New Hampshire, state of New Hampshire coronavirus. Wait a minute, sorry, so sorry. The Merrimack School Department Health and Safety Task Force, and, which I think is a, is a great thing. It's a good place to, you know, to have, you know, that person there. I wonder if, you know, just in terms of resources that we have available to us, and I don't know how things get to the website, but that might be a place where, you know, we utilize maybe some people that are involved in this to help us out with the website. You know, I just think that would be something that we could, we should look at. And, you know, given, I know we can't vote on things, but, you know, given sort of, we're in a public health crisis. And, you know, we all, we, I think most of us now know people that have died from COVID. You know, some of us, as time has gone on, now, we actually, I know people that are being transferred out of this area, out of state for, for a bed, you know, so it's not like we were three months ago or six months ago. And I just feel like it's our duty to, to look at, what can we do to, you know, to, to protect health of our community? And I, you know, I just wanted to get into a discussion about that and see what people's thoughts were, and, again, you know, we can't vote on anything, but I certainly think it's something that I would like to, to see us talk about and, and, you know, see what we can do as a, as the town government for a community, you know, that's really impacted. In addition to that, I know, but Nancy, when we were on the PFAS Commission together, one of the things that was raised to us was, not only are we at risk like the rest of the state and the nation, but, you know, we have, you know, peer-reviewed science that has shown that people in PFAS-impacted communities like ours are at greater risk of severe disease from COVID, and that vaccines have, are less efficacious than in other, to other populations. So I feel like sort of the burden is on us to, to at least discuss, you know, things that we can do to, to, to protect our community. And so that's my spiel, and I don't know how that gets addressed at what point, but, I mean, I think we're sort of in a place right now that I would hate to see too much time go by because I think it's, if nothing, if anything is important, public health is, so, thank you.
Okay. I, I don't think we can get into a lengthy discussion about that now. We'll try and see if we can bring that up or something in a future agenda item, so people are more prepared and want to talk about it. Barbara?
I can say, and it won't take a vote to do it, that we used to have it on the town website. And I just looked, and it's not there anymore. So I don't know if it's able to recreate it or just pull it out, if it's been, you know, shadowed, just bring it back out again. And that would at least be something. In the meantime.
I mean, I have.
Because we didn't vote to remove it.
I didn't want to get into this discussion, and it's probably not, it's probably not removed, it's probably just buried.
Well, that's what I think, it shattered out.
But, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure you.
Honestly, because this was a budget workshop, we really shouldn't even be talking any more than the counselor brought up concerns. And the proper way to do this next is to bring it up at a, in a public meeting.
An agenda item.
When it's an agenda, so people can actually tune into it. It, there's an RSA on the books that basically says that you shouldn't talk about anything that's not on your agenda because people don't have notification that it's there. So with these being, you know, the budget hearings, and as you, as you'll see, we don't go through a lot, the legislative updates, the town manager's reports, there's hardly any even announcements at these meetings, and that's because these are just workshops. And they're very specifics to talk about budget, the budget. So for something like that, I can look at the COVID stuff tomorrow on the website. And if it's not, if it's buried, we can bring it back up to the front. So, you know, I know that they're changing and everything else is going on, so we can, we can do something of that sort on our website. So I'll look into that. Okay?
And can we put it on the agenda for the next, whatever the next?
We can take it up for consideration, sure.
Thank you.
Lon?
Did the chair entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
My move, we adjourn.
Second. Motion by Lon and seconded by Nancy or Barbara?
Me, but it was a tie. I'll give it to her.
Well, I was going to give it to the other side of the room, just, so Barbara, seconded by Barbara. To adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining, that passes six, zero, zero. Finley's not here, right. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.